Good, okay. Okay, good evening and welcome to the July 6, 2023, meeting of the Humboldt County Planning Commission. I am Noah Levy, Chair for this meeting. Before we begin, for those of you watching remotely, I just want to call your attention to the first two pages of our agenda, which list the various ways to watch or participate remotely. If you are at a computer and wish to participate, it is best to use the Zoom interface. However, you can also watch on the computer on the humboldt.legistar.com website. Just be advised, if you are watching it through that website, the feed runs 30 seconds or more behind, so if you wish to comment by phone, you're going to need to get on the phone a little earlier than the feed might suggest. With that said, I would begin this meeting and invite you to join me for a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Laura, could we please get a roll call attendance of the commissioners, please?
Commissioner Scavdall?
Here.
Commissioner Levy?
Here.
Commissioner Landry?
Here.
Commissioner Mulder?
Commissioner O'Neil?
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Present.
Commissioner West?
Here.
Okay, we have six commissioners, that's a quorum. Director Ford, are there any agenda modifications we should be aware of?
We are not making any modifications to the agenda. I would call your attention to the dais where we did give you some supplementals tonight. There is a supplemental for item E4, Cali's Finest. There is a supplemental for G5 for the Schneider Coastal Development Permit. There is a supplemental for... This doesn't have an item number on it, but it's for the New Earth Farms LLC. And there is a supplemental for... Oh, thank you. There's a supplemental for the Cald Row LLC Conditional Use Permits and also for the last item, the Nancy Young Permit. Actually, I do want to make a modification when we get to the item for the Gec Moller Coastal Development Permit. That particular item is currently being considered by the court. There is a component of that that's being considered by judicial review, and the judge has stayed the planning commission action.
Oh.
So we need to continue that off calendar to a date uncertain. And that is item number four under new business.
Okay, well, thank you for making us aware of that. Commissioner Mitchell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When it starts to item E4, the letter appears to be for, from CDFW, and I'm curious if this changes staff recommendation, if this has been incorporated into staff recommendation, or if this needs to be continued.
It does not change the staff's recommendation. We are prepared to address that tonight.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
So we will pull E4 from consent.
Okay, so we'll pull that in advance, okay? All right, well, that brings us to Section D of the agenda, which is public comment on non-agenda items. This is the time for anyone in the audience, or on Zoom, or phone, to make a comment on a matter pertaining to the planning commission's jurisdiction, which is not an item on our agenda. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to make a comment on matters not on our agenda Seeing none in the room, seeing no hands raised on Zoom, then I will close public comment on non-agenda items. That brings us to Section E, the consent agenda. And as usual, I will run through each of the items, I think there are seven remaining on the consent agenda, to see if anyone in the audience or in the commission wishes to pull them for discussion or questions. Item one on consent is review and approval of the June 1, 2023, action summary. Any commissioners wishing to make comments about that? Okay, we will leave that on consent. Item two is the Myers Flat Farm LLC project in the Miranda area. This is recommended for continuance to August 17, 2023, meeting. Is there anyone wishing to comment on the continuance of this item? No, okay. Item three is We Are Up in the McKinleyville area. This is also recommended for continuance to a date uncertain, to be re-noticed for the July 20 meeting, correct?
It has been re-noticed, yes, so it will be on the 7/20 agenda.
So continue to the 7/20, all right, I mean...
Yeah, it's been re-noticed, so whether you continue it to that date or continue it to a date uncertain, it's immaterial, because it is being legally noticed for that meeting. The reason that this had to happen is that there was an error in the notice and one of the entitlements was not listed, and so we couldn't have the commission hear it.
Understood. But for clarity, why don't we just say we're continuing this to the July 20 meeting, if that's not a problem? Item four is Cali's Finest Gardens LLC.
Chair, if I could?
Oh, sorry.
That's not how it's listed in the recommendation on the...
Fair enough, my mistake. Then we will, as it stated on the agenda, we will continue this, We Are Up, item number three, we will continue to a date uncertain. Or that is the recommendation on the consent calendar. Item four is Cali's Finest Gardens LLC in the Bridgeville area. Anyone wishing to... Yes, that one has already been pulled, thank you, that one we've pulled already. Item five, Mitchell Minor Subdivision in the McKinleyville area. Is there anyone wishing to pull this item for questions or comments? Seeing none, we will leave that on consent. Item six is the Green Diamond Alto Suchanek Lot Line Adjustment and Zone Boundary Adjustment in the McKinleyville area. Is there anyone wishing to pull this item for questions or discussion? Seeing none, we will leave that on consent. Item seven is the New Earth Farms LLC project in the Willow Creek area. That, I see a hand, so that one we will pull for discussion. And item eight on consent is the Riverside Community Services District, Community Test Well, General Plan Conformance Review. Is there anyone wishing to pull that item for discussion or questions? Seeing none, we will leave that on consent. So with that, I would entertain a motion to move items one, two, three, five, six, eight, from the consent calendar.
I move items one, two, three, five, six, eight on the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion on the motion before we have a voice vote? Okay, then, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any...
Lonex.
Lonex, Commissioner Landry was the second, Commissioner Mitchell was the motion. Thanks, I should have overstated that. Any opposed? Chair votes aye, so the motion passes unanimously. Okay, so then, coming to Section F, which is items pulled from consent, and our first item would be item E4, Cali's Finest Gardens, and I would welcome a staff report on this item.
My name is Megan Acevedo, and I am the assigned planner for Cali's Finest Gardens LLC. The applicant is applying for a conditional use permit located within the Bridgeville Here's an image showing the location of Cali's Finest Gardens and its proximity to Bridgeville. The project is located southeast from Bridgeville, and the site is accessed by a private road, China Mine Road, from State Highway 36. The applicant will be required to enter into a road maintenance association for China Mine Road. Oh, it's not changing this slide.
We've lost internet access. Okay, we'll just take a moment to let staff get their computer connected.
Laura, are you seeing screen share again? Because the computer...
Try to stop and restart it.
Yeah?
So it's... You could probably use that.
Okay. So am I going to have to go back into Facebook?
No, screen share is stopped there. Break away from the... Or you can just restart your screen.
Which one is that?
Okay.
Here is an image showing the location for Cali's Finest Gardens and its proximity to Bridgeville. The project is located southeast from Bridgeville, and the site is accessed by a private road, China Mine Road, from State Highway 36. The applicant will be required to enter into a road maintenance association for China Mine Road, and the road maintenance association will be required to construct the improvements recommended in the final action plan. Improvements would include improving the driveway to meet Caltrans standard for a commercial driveway. The site will be operated by the applicant and up to five employees. A maximum of 10 vehicle trips are anticipated per day, and the operations are pre-existing, and no increase in traffic is anticipated with the project. The applicant is applying for a conditional use permit in order to permit 30,000 square feet of outdoor cannabis cultivation. The applicant is proposing a 4,110-square-foot ancillary nursery space, and planning staff is only recommending approval of 3,000 square feet of ancillary nursery space. Water will be sourced from an existing 345,000-gallon rain catchment pond, and an additional 70,000-gallon rain catchment pond is proposed. Annual water use is estimated at 200,000 gallons per year, which is 11 gallons per square foot per year. Power is sourced by existing solar arrays on-site, and the applicant plans to have three emergency-only backup generators on-site. Processing facility is proposed with an ADA restroom, and up to five employees will be used during peak operations. The applicant applied for 35,500 square feet of pre-existing outdoor cannabis cultivation in December of 2016. A cultivation area verification was produced by the county in March of 2018, which found a total of 21,710 square feet of pre-2016 outdoor cultivation, which utilized a 2015 Terra Server image. After discussions with the applicant and a meeting with the applicant and their agent, the planning division, I'm sorry, with the planning division, in August of 2018, it was determined that the applicant had relocated some historic cultivation area on-site that was not included in the original Cav that was done by the county. And it was determined that no expansion had occurred with this relocation of the prehistoric cultivation areas. An interim permit was then issued for 30,000 square feet of outdoor cultivation. The circled areas, I don't think you can see where I marked up the image, but the top one is Area D and the bottom one is Area E. Those two areas were not included in the original Cav, and portions of Areas C and B were also not accounted for in the original Cav due to shading in the imagery. Additional measurements have been taken of these areas in question, utilizing a 2014 Google Earth Pro image, as the Terra Server imagery is no longer available. The final revised measurements for pre-2016 cultivation area came out to 31,965 square feet, and the county is only recommending approval of the 30,000 square feet that was in the interim permit. That concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Questions for staff on the report? Yes, Commissioner Mitchell?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that the correspondence from CDFW contain a number of concerning allegations, and I was wondering if you could walk through them, and I guess how we can get comfortable that they'll comply with these conditions if they're not doing so under their interim permit.
So if the commission would pull up, I believe it's Attachment 3, which is the conditions of approval, there are several conditions relative to CDFW that are applicable here. I'm going to start with Condition 19, at least. The application is, the applicant is required to submit an amendment to the Stream Bed Alteration Agreement with CDFW, and shall submit the revised CDFW signed and approved Stream Bed Alteration Agreement to the county. Condition number 23, the applicant was issued a notice of violation on May 23, 2023, and the applicant is required to resolve the violation with CDFW prior to commencing cultivation. It was determined by CDFW that the applicant shall install, that's 24, so what we've tried to do is incorporate the CDFW comments into the conditions of approval.
Was this owner or operator previously operating under a interim permit?
Yes.
And did that interim permit have conditions of approval?
Interim permits do not have conditions. The condition of an interim permit is that you're allowed to continue with the baseline operation of what you originally had. Obviously, the history of this particular site is that we identified what appeared to be an expansion, but it was really a consolidation of cultivation sites into one area. We had a settlement agreement with them, identified that, in fact, they did have 30,000 square feet of cultivation pre-existing, and so continued to allow them to have the interim permit.
But there's no, like, guidelines or rules, like, don't let your toxic trash out into the area where wild animals are, like, anything goes under interim permit, or... I feel like I'm missing something.
I mean, part of the struggle here is that they are obviously, have been identified as doing things that are in violation. I mean, it's not okay to have a mess like that. And so what we have done here is required that that be cleaned up, and that's consistent with what the approach has been throughout the cannabis cultivation permitting process is to bring people into compliance. Nobody, I think, saw that it would take six years, but it has taken a while, and so what we're trying to do here is bring this site completely into compliance.
Thank you.
Commissioner Scavdall?
Yeah, I just, I'm referring back to the staff report, and it appears to me that recently, it says April 28, planning department and CDFW were on-site, and that while this supplemental information came in, I read the staff report as having already addressed most of this. It just seems like final documentation from CDFW came in in writing, but it appears from the staff report that correspondence have been going on, and that their recommendations have already been included in the project conditions. Is that fair to state?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, thank you.
Commissioner O'Neil?
I have a question, it's sort of a general question, but when you say that they're required to join a road association, that is different than join and comply with the terms. Once they join that road association, is it, is the county, like, step back and has no part in whether or not they comply with it? Because I was a part of road association, and one member wouldn't pay dues, and wouldn't do this and that, and if you already have a person who doesn't like to follow rules or comply and has violations, that could be a problem. So can you say that they have to be a part of and comply with the terms, or is that beyond your scope?
No, that certainly is the intent, is that they not only join the road association, but are active participants and comply with it. And if we can find that condition while the other things are going on and see if that can be clarified a little bit.
Just the way it's written, because I faced that situation where we all paid our dues, we got ready to improve the road, and one member who says, "I'm not paying my dues," you know, and therefore they're not really active, they're a member, and they're in compliance with your requirement that they be a member, but not complying with the terms of the association.
Yeah, let us take a look at that, that's a good point. It certainly is our interpretation that if they're not actively contributing to the maintenance of the road, that they're not in compliance with their permit.
So it may just be the way that's worded, that requirement?
Through the chair, I'd also point your attention to condition of approval number 15, which is that they need to do all of the recommendations, or, sorry, that's the wrong one, but the idea here, if we can find the condition, is that they should be doing, they're going to be required to do all of the road improvements that have been recommended by the engineer, so the road maintenance association gives them an avenue to help bring some of the other property owners into that. And it is a condition or a requirement of the cannabis ordinance, but I think to more specifically address your concern, there is a requirement on this permit to do those road improvements, whether that happens with or without...
The association?
Right.
Cliff, it looks like, are you still looking for that?
Yeah. Maybe I'll just make, while he's looking, make a comment. Again, with respect to the road associations, largely depends on where you are on the road that is being maintained, and in this case, this is the first property off of Highway 36 on China Mine Road. Everybody else on the road actually drives through this parcel to get to their parcels, so you still have to participate in the road association, but each one, I don't know how this one is set up, and, you know, sometimes they're set up based on how much road frontage you have, or...
Yeah, it's just whatever those terms are that you're going to comply, and if it requires that you pay $200 dues every year, then that's part of the compliance, but all we require is that they join a road association, and I just wanted to clarify whether joining and complying with, whatever their terms are, that association will come up with their requirements, and they vote and have annual meetings and all that, but if you have non-complying members...
You certainly can, and I'm sure many do.
So that is condition of approval number 26, that references the requirement to construct the improvements in the final action plan.
So just could I ask a question on that? Commissioner O'Neil, would it address your concern to say the applicant is required to enter into a road maintenance association and actively participate in the road maintenance association?
Or comply with requirements, because active, you could go to the meetings, but I'm just saying, I experienced this, where one individual refused to pay their dues, and the rest of us finally had to just do the work without them. They came to the meetings and said, "I'm not going to pay the dues."
Okay. Okay, we'll add that in, that it's to actively comply with the requirements of the road maintenance association.
And they make up their own rules.
I do want to bring us to public comment on this item. Are there any other questions from the commission for staff before we do that? Okay, then let's move to public comment on this agenda item, and I would invite the applicant, Cali's Finest Gardens, or their agent, to go first, if you are present either in the room or on Zoom. I'm not seeing any hands up on Zoom, or anyone... Ah, well, there is a hand up on Zoom now, but I don't see anyone identifying as the agent on Zoom. Is there anyone in the room who would wish to comment on Cali's Finest Gardens? Okay, then I will close public comment in person and move to public comment on Zoom and phone. I do see one hand raised, that is Public 7108. Go ahead, it's your three minutes.
Good evening, this is Bonnie Blackberry, and I was reading through the staff report and coming across the violations that CDF sent, the latest one, only a couple months ago, with stream lights in some of these green houses, and I'm not sure if there was any consequence for doing that, or just don't do it again. This permit, interim, started, what, back in 2016, 2017, and with the county not doing yearly inspections of people that they issue interim permits, I believe is a big problem. And I'm sorry that they haven't been inspected to find a bunch of this stuff that's been going on for years. And how do you plan on making sure that those street lights don't go back up after you check it all out? I was also a little concerned about the generators being used for backup, and if... I was also a little concerned about the generator being used for backup and if planned to, in the future, to onsite processing. All of that takes a lot of power and emergency backup isn't really explained. Does that mean you just didn't have enough power? It was a cloudy day? Or what's the terms for using emergency backup? Okay, yeah, and I saw there were water blockers. I think they finally got removed. I don't know why the satellite unitry didn't catch some of this stuff. Anyway, thank you. Looking forward to hearing your response.
Thank you, Bonnie. Is there anyone else on the phone or Zoom wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I will close public comments. Oh, wait, I just saw a hand go up at the end for Paula. So I will reopen public comment just to allow Paula to comment if you wish.
Good evening, Chairman, Director Ford and Commission. This is Paula Pavlich, PR Professional Services. I'm really only speaking up just to comment that I am listed as the agent and I'm actually no longer the agent. And I just, for credibility for myself, I just wanted to make that note. So that's it.
Thank you so much for that clarification. Okay, seeing no other hands raised, I will now close public comments for this item and bring it back to the Commission for further deliberation. Yes, Commissioner Mitchell.
Thank you. In situations in the past, we've, you know, asked if we had resources to conduct extra inspections. And my understanding is that we have a difficult time meeting all of our annual inspection goals already, so adding extra ones really is not feasible. But is it possible to add a condition of approval whereby we can charge them for a third party to do a quasi-inspection, almost like requiring an outside audit for compliance? I know there's issues with.
Actually, it would be more simple for us just to do it. We'd have to go through some hoops to hire a third party.
Okay. It could be charged for that, so that.
We can charge for that. I don't know that our concern with that is completely related just to staffing. It's more related to keeping track of doing multiple inspections on sites. It's just something that is really out of the normal. But if the Commission is truly concerned about the compliance of this site, we can certainly do that.
Thank you.
Other thoughts? Yes, Commissioner West?
I do have some concerns about the compliance of this site. And I also would be supportive of the comply with the road association that Peggy mentioned.
So I think at the least, if nobody objects, we can ensure that the, I think it was Condition Twenty-Seven that pertains to the road association, be rewarded per Director Ford's phrasing to add, you know, join and comply with or be in full compliance with, yes. So we'll consider that stipulated. Commissioner Mitchell is bringing up the possibility that we might impose an additional requirement for, well, for what exactly? Maybe you should state it.
Well, I guess to take a step back, the comments from CDFW lay out a number of items with which they are already out of compliance. So at the very least, I would say that we need to have an inspection to make sure that these have been remedied. I don't, their request was to have it done by June 30th. Do we know if that's been done, or?
But just to Commissioner Scavdell's point before, several of those points, possibly not all, but several of what CDFW is requiring are listed explicitly in the conditions of approval already. So I think we want to be clear if there's things not addressed, or if we just want an extra inspection outside of what we're already requiring.
Okay, well, here's what I'm thinking. This whole arrangement whereby we grant entitlements for people to come in compliance rests almost unilaterally on the applicant being able to follow the rules and instructions. And we have to trust that they're going to do that. I have four examples right in front of me that tell me that they cannot. We just had someone who represented say, "Please don't associate my reputation with this project." So I'm not even sure how I'm even going to vote with extra inspections. So I feel that the trust is not there. And every single one of the items that we would normally assume get done because we make them requirements. Trust but verify is what we need, because trusting alone has not worked for this applicant. That's where I'm coming from.
Oh, yes, Director Ford, please.
Thank you, Chair, for recognizing me. I'd just like to call your attention first to Condition Number Six, which says that the applicant shall have a site visit conducted by the county within 30 days of approval in order to verify that the site has been cleaned up to the satisfaction of planning and, should be planning, and Building Department and CDFW. And we may want to modify that to say they shall have a site visit conducted by the county and CDFW to verify that the site's been cleaned up to the satisfaction of planning Building Department and CDFW, and to confirm that no additional string lighting exists within the outdoor cultivation greenhouses. And then I would add that you may want to add a completely separate condition to indicate that the site shall be subject to the normal annual inspection and a second inspection with one day notice at the expense of the applicant.
Through the chair. I like that suggestion for the record. Okay.
I'd like to see CDF, CDFW also invited to that other inspection if they choose to participate.
Okay. Commissioner West?
I also like those suggestions. I thank you for the clarification. I would be comfortable also with just the site visit upon, within 30 days, and then the annual. I think those would also be sufficient.
Well, okay, so we have a suggestion from the director that we slightly modify the existing Condition Six, but that we also add a condition that says the applicant shall be subject to the regular annual inspection as well as an additional inspection at their expense on one day's notice. That was the suggestion I heard the director make in response to the Commission's concerns. If, how do people feel about going ahead with that, adding that condition? Commissioner Scavdell?
I would suggest that we add that condition by modifying Condition Twenty-Two, which is consent to an annual onsite inspection with at least 24 hours prior notice and subject to additional inspections as deemed necessary by the planning director to be paid for by the applicant. So basically what I'm saying is, if you get through the 30-day inspection, if you did the annual inspection and there were no violations, I would think the planning director might waive doing additional inspections. But if you're finding violations, I would deal with those violations and subject the applicant to additional inspections at their cost.
Commissioner Mitchell?
I would say that the issue with leaving it up to the director is that the director has a whole number of things he has to prioritize. And going through different files, seeing where we've left little post-it notes for him, it may not be the most efficient. So perhaps we could state that after two or three successful inspections, then the every, the bonus inspection can go away. But I don't think just.
I support that. That's fine. I would agree.
Okay, well, I hear us honing in on consensus. I just want to make sure that we are really clear about what we're asking staff to amend here. I think it makes sense, given the existing, it's Section B Twenty-Two that Commissioner Scavdell cited, that is the one that says consent to an annual onsite compliance inspection with at least 24 hours' notice. That would be the place, I think, to amend and add an additional one for the first couple of years. You don't support leaving that to the discretion of the director, so I think we just need to be clear what exactly it needs to say.
I'm not at all suggesting I don't trust the discretion of the director. I'm saying that for just clarity purposes, we should state the way he originally said it, which is that they're subject to the annual and one random one upon 24 hours' notice. And after three successful, you know, inspections without any noted violations, then the additional ones can cease.
Okay. Director, do you think that that's sufficiently clear?
Yes, it's sufficiently clear. And one of the things I would like to just kind of affirm for a bit of a record-keeping thing, this is not to be argumentative, the conditions in B are really ordinance requirements. So those are kind of FYIs. Those are not where staff would typically look for special conditions. And that's the recommendation for a new condition that would be a new Condition Thirty, to ensure that as we're looking for the special conditions, that we see that, and it's not lost down in standard conditions.
Sure, that makes total sense. Okay, well, thank you. And I think with that, we may be ready to move this forward.
As soon as I find the wording that I want to use here, hold on a second. So. I'd like to make a motion that we approve Cali's Finest Gardens LLC, be Resolution Twenty-three dash nine eighty-four, which finds we considered mitigated negative declaration in the addendum that was prepared for the project. Project complies with the general planning zoning ordinance and approves a conditional use permit subject to the recommended conditions of approval in Attachment One-A with the addition of the requirement that the applicant join the Road Maintenance Association and engage and participate in that association actively, and that the applicant be subject to special inspection. So it'd be a new condition, special inspection in addition to the annual inspection, and that the applicant will pay for the cost of the special inspection annually for up to three years.
Would you accept a friendly amendment to change the discussion about the road association to say actively comply with the road association?
Yes, that's, I think that's what I intended to say.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Scavdell amended.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner West. Any further discussion on this motion? Okay, then I would invite a voice vote on the motion. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, Chair votes aye. Any opposed, say nay. Okay, we have, the motion passes five to one. Okay, and that is Cali's Finest Gardens LLC. That brings us to the other item pulled from Consent, which is Item E-Seven, New Earth Farms in the Willow Creek area. Commissioner West, I believe it was you who pulled this. Is it a, is it a simple question you wanted to ask, or would you prefer to have a staff presentation on the item?
I had concerns around the letter that was submitted from North Point Consulting, so I'm hoping to have a staff presentation on that.
Sure. Okay, then I would invite a staff report, please, on New Earth Farms.
All right. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm the assigned planner for New Earth Farms LLC. They're requesting a special permit in the Willow Creek area. The image on the left shows the location of New Earth Farms and its proximity to Willow Creek. The project is located south from Willow Creek, and the site is accessed from private road Staten Drive from County-Maintained Friday Ridge Road from State Highway 299. The applicant had a road evaluation report prepared by North Point Consulting Group, which assessed the .6 miles of Staten Drive. The road evaluation report shows that the entire road segment is on average 18 to 20 feet in width, with adequate shoulders and turnouts at all pinch points. The site is currently approved for a 10,000-square-foot cannabis permit with up to six employees for operations. And the approval of this project will increase the employees used on-site to up to seven employees. A maximum of 16-vehicle trips are anticipated per day, and the access road has been determined to be developed to the equivalent of a Category Four road standard with the recommendations in the road evaluation report. The applicant is applying for a special permit under the county's 2.0 cannabis ordinance in order to permit 32,500 square feet of new mixed-light cannabis cultivation. The site is already approved for 10,000 square feet of mixed-light cultivation under the 1.0 ordinance, and this would bring the total cultivation area to 42,500 square feet. The applicant will be reconfiguring the existing cultivation site in order to make room for more greenhouses within the approved graded area. Water will be sourced from an existing and proposed rain catchment system. There is a total of 17,500 gallons of water storage on the site, and the applicant is proposing to replace these tanks with a 100,000-gallon rain catchment tank. And an additional 500,000-gallon rain catchment tank is proposed. Annual water use is estimated at 595,000 gallons per year for the full 42,500 square feet of cultivation, which is approximately 13 gallons per square foot per year. Power for the project is proposed to come from PG&E renewable sources. Processing will occur offsite, and up to seven employees will be used for operations. The project is also requesting a special permit to approve a setback reduction from public lands. The approved project has already been approved for a setback. The approved project has already been approved for a setback reduction of approximately 70 feet, shown in the upper image, and the proposed project would increase the setback from 70 feet to approximately 30 feet. The project was referred to the Six Rivers National Forest, and no comments were received. As the setback reduction will utilize the existing open flat for additional cultivation onsite, and cultivation will be located as far away from the public lands to the west, which provide more substantial wildlife habitat than the public lands to the east, the setback reduction may be considered appropriate. The project will be served by PG&E renewable sources and is conditioned to adhere to international dark sky standards, and noise and light impacts are expected to be minimal. The project is consistent with recreational use on public lands, as the proposed project is not located near developed campgrounds, trails, or other related facilities. Comments were received from CDFW with concerns about the proposed project. Additional concerns, I'm sorry, additional conditions have been added to the project to address the concerns from CDFW. Concerns regarding potential impacts of the project on NSO has been addressed with the applicant's NSO scoping report. The NSO scoping report was prepared by biologist Karina Kamirov, which references NSO surveys that have been recently conducted around the project area and determines that no additional NSO surveys are recommended. No additional NSO surveys are recommended as condition of approval for the project, and the project is conditioned to limit any ground disturbing or construction activities to outside the NSO breeding season. Another concern from CDFW is the potential need for additional grading onsite. The applicant has already obtained a grading permit for the proposed location for site reconfiguration, and no additional grading is needed. In regards to storm water management, the applicant is conditioned to implement storm water management around the cultivation area to include rooting storm water into settling basins or bio swales, where the runoff can be incorporated into groundwater and away from the streams. Another condition that has been added to the project is prior to installing, installing the 100,000-gallon rain catchment tank, the applicant shall replace the failing culvert located near the road and existing well. The applicant shall also complete the work outlined in the stream bed alteration agreement with CDFW and submit the required reporting prior to conducting the proposed expansion development activities. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Scobdell. Do Commissioners have any questions for staff about this report?
I do.
Commissioner O'Neill.
So if there's a road report in the application, but then we have a letter from North Point saying that they have to remove that because they're not authorizing it to be used because it was never paid for, why are we using it?
The, those application materials have been submitted. Basically, once they get submitted to the county, they become part of the public record. So they were utilized during the entire review of this project. They were sent out as part of the referral to various agencies, and they were utilized in our analysis of it. We are of the understanding that the applicant and North Point are having a disagreement, but it's really, in our view, a civil matter between the two, not something for us to involve ourselves with. Those materials have been submitted and are part of the record.
Can I just ask a follow-up? Was it only with this email sent yesterday that you were formally advised, or we were advised, that North Point does not consent to the use of these materials?
We were advised of that by North Point approximately, it was sometime early last week, so it wasn't just this email. But by that point in time, the staff report had already been prepared and everything. And so, but again, our opinion is that it's already been submitted. It's been part of the public record. It must remain part of the public record.
Right. Okay. Further questions for staff before we do public comment?
So I was just wondering if all of CDFW's comments have been incorporated into the conditions of approval, or if any of them were determined to not be necessary to comply with?
I have addressed their comments. The only one that I noticed today that is not a part of the conditions is removal of the trash from the stream. However, that is a state violation, and so if they do have trash existing within the stream, that is a violation of the water board.
So the comment that they hadn't seen a biological report or additional northern spotted owl surveys, those have been done?
Oh, sorry.
Oh, yeah. Those were submitted, yes. And so actually, subsequent to those comments, we did share the northern spotted owl survey with the requestor at CDFW, and they were, they were satisfied, especially given the requirement that we are recommending it be placed on a project that there's no construction or any ground disturbance that occurs during the breeding season.
Thank you for that clarification. Thank you. Okay. If there's no other comments or questions at this time about the staff report, I would like to open this to public comment, and I would invite the applicant of New Earth Farms or agent for that project to speak first, if you are here. Is there anyone in the room wishing to speak on this comment? Are you the applicant?
I am the agent, Kelly Flotus with Margaret Advisors. The applicant is here.
Thank you very much.
We'd like to defer our comments until we hear the rest of the public comment, so we can respond to anything.
That's fine. We'll give you ample opportunity after any other comments.
Chair, if I could, one of the things that Commission rules do allow is for an applicant to speak both at the beginning and the end, so they do not lose their opportunity to speak to comments afterwards.
Noted. You may address us for up to 10 minutes, I believe, at the beginning, and still have the opportunity to respond to any further comments or questions.
Okay, I'll go ahead and address a few items. First of all, the comment from CDFW that there was trash in the streamside management area was actually a bit of, not a good description. What it was, and what it is, is an abandoned vehicle that has been there for decades. And so what is going on is the applicant is putting all of their projects in the same 401 certification application, so that includes removal of anything in the streamside management, repair of the culverts, any corrections to the roadways. And the way that this works is the water board has requested that all projects be put together and then submitted as a single application. Because this is a project that is going to require a lot of investment, the applicant wanted to wait to determine approval of the project before moving forward with all of these corrections. And in addition, there is obviously a delay because of concerns about the ballot initiative, that is, that we're going to have to wait until March to see if it's going to have an impact on this particular application. So all of the projects are on hold at this time, but they are planned to make those corrections and improvements. And then with regard to the financial dispute, much of the project has been paid for. What happened was there was a billing that happened with a project for a 2.0 project for a property that could never qualify for 2.0. And when the applicant discovered that issue, that they had paid thousands and thousands of dollars on a project that could not be approved, they stopped payment and have been attempting to resolve the issue with a consultant. They, their response was to send this letter to the county, and we believe that that was not a fair way to try to resolve this, and we don't believe that it should be a condition of how this particular project is evaluated.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Just by way of clarification, are you suggesting that the dispute is over unpaid bills for a different project?
It is, it came about because of paid bills on a project that should not have been charged, and those funds should have been applied to this project. But this project does have paid bills against it. It's gone on over time. Bills have been paid over time. Final bills have not been completed because there was a dispute over a different project that was being considered.
And are you willing to share the amount that's outstanding on this project?
Not at this time. I don't have the accounting here with me, but I can tell you that thousands and thousands of dollars have been paid, and we can provide receipts if the planning commission needs that. We just don't believe that this dispute has any bearing on the conditions of the project itself. We believe that all of the requirements have been made, the surveys have been made, and that it meets the requirements of the 2.0 ordinance. And related to that, we just have a couple of modifications that we'd like to bring to the attention of the planning department. Under the Water Resources section, page 5, the last sentence of the first paragraph says, "All water tanks shall be installed and filled with rainwater prior to commencement of cultivation activities." As there's an existing cultivation, we'd like to modify that to commencement of new or expanded cultivation activities. And then relation to Section B, the ongoing requirements, Item 21 mentions the compliance with the state water board, and it actually says, "At minimum to include a statement of diversion for surface water." That actually doesn't apply to this project. This is entirely a rain catchment project. So Condition 21 in Section B doesn't apply. So I just wanted to bring that to your guys' attention. Okay? And we're available to answer questions.
All right, we might take advantage of that. Thank you for your, for your comments. I would like to invite others, other members of the public who wish to comment on this item, either anyone in the room or on Zoom or phone. Please raise your hand if you wish to comment on this item. Okay, not seeing any hands raised. At this time, was there any further questions for the applicant or their agent from the commission? Okay, then I am going to close public comments on this item and bring it back to the commission Commissioner Scobdell? Oh, no.
I'll just say, as a longtime consultant, I don't like being put in the middle up here on the planning commission between a client and their consultant over unresolved payments. And I know that it's very difficult for a consultant to get paid for services after projects have been approved if a client doesn't want to pay their bill. So it leaves me in a bit of a quandary, and I'm getting bits and pieces of the story here, but it's also, sounds like a long, ongoing disagreement over work related to another project and funds to be, for that project to be applied to this project, and yada, yada, yada. So kind of at a loss what to do about that. Just, I'll just leave my thoughts at that.
Thank you. Commissioner Mitchell?
Well, I guess I would add or respond to that by saying that there have been some fairly acrimonious and disturbing allegations made about encroachments by neighbors or the fact that perhaps the property is not correct on the survey, but it all has to do with things that are civil in nature, and we here focus on, you know, planning issues. And while sometimes it's really compelling, we need to make sure that we're making decisions based on the evidence presented to us and, and not get into the, you know, the easement police or whatnot. That's just how I've learned to get past things that seem uncomfortable like that. For my own opinion on this project, I really appreciate the fact that the owner and the representative showed up to answer our questions. They've pointed out, you know, mistakes or clarifications that needed to be made. And while I generally don't like to see encroach the setback reduced so substantially, since it's already, it's not that big of a change. So I'd be prepared to support the project, and I appreciate that this is a rainwater catchment project as opposed to other types of wells or surface water diversion.
Commissioner West?
I also have some concerns around feeling uncomfortable about what has been put forth about payment. Also, having come from the consultant field, it is incredibly costly to pursue in civil court. However, we also haven't been given enough information for me to feel comfortable making the judgment on whether or not payment should play into our decision, so it won't be a factor in my decision tonight.
Any other comments from Commissioners about this one? Or questions?
I made a call to the staff department, and we walked through some of the conditions, and I appreciated that, and it seems that I'm ready to support this.
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll just add that I did not have any significant concerns about this project that weren't resolved by conditions or other materials until this, this issue comes up with North Point Consulting. It's unusual to be, to be given this evidence at the last minute, at least in my recollection. I don't know, I guess I would just ask staff, is this, is this sort of issue something that you've contended with in other applications where you have the materials that you think are adequate and ready to move forward, and then you get told that somebody claims they didn't get paid for that work?
So one of the things that often gets hard, and I truly respect the comments that have been made from people who struggle as consultants in this, absolutely, is that when it comes into our possession, it's public record. So then it's part of the record that we're basing decisions on. And if the payment then is a civil matter, that is really a private matter, that's not part of the action that's before the commission relative to the permit.
Commissioner Mitchell?
I would just say that the only way, because we're not a collection agency or a court, you know, ready to have witnesses on this, so the only thing that I could even think of that we could possibly do is add a condition requiring them to pay their consultants, but that seems like it may be outside the scope of what we're allowed to do. So in which case, I guess what is the alternative other than relying on the reports that are in the public record saying, "I can't make the finding because I don't want to consider the road evaluation report that says the road's fine"? I just think it's a slippery slope, and while I have profound respect for, for Prage and North Point Consulting, this just is a bridge too far for me to consider denying a permit based on a billing dispute.
And if you, but if you read what they say in their email, they say that they agreed to pay, and so they gave them the report, and then now they refuse to pay. So they didn't say what was explained to us, and maybe we should make a decision based on whether they pay their bills or not, but it doesn't comply with your explanation that there's these other projects, and it says in here that they agreed to pay, and then now they're refusing to pay. I just want to clarify that there, it doesn't jive- I just want to clarify that it doesn't jive with what was told.
Both statements can be factually accurate. When you engage a consultant, you sign something saying that you agree to pay for the services rendered. And so they agreed. And then at some point, it sounds like there was another project that they had made payments on and that they felt, you know, should never have been charged because it's not a suitable parcel. And we don't know to what extent that played out.
I'm just, that doesn't sound logical to me. This sounds more logical. And, you know, whether we use this as a factor or we're allowed to use this as a factor, I'm just pointing out the fact that it's two different stories. And maybe the moral of the story is, don't give your report till you get paid. And that's unfortunate, but if that's the business that people are in where you can't trust, you know, someone, then in the future, that's what they should do, is not release those reports, unfortunately. And then you'll get a reputation because they talk to each other, and they'll tell other people. And the next time you try to do work with someone, you know, they'll have already heard, don't re-release your report until you get paid.
Okay.
So I'm going to attempt a motion. It may or may not go anywhere. But I would move that we adopt the resolution which does the following. Finds the planning commission is considered the EIR for the CCLUO and the addendum that was prepared for New Earth Farms LLC, and finds that the proposed project complies with the general plan and zoning ordinance, and approves the special permit subject to the recommended conditions of approval, and approves the cultivation operations plan and site plan.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Mitchell. Is there a second?
A second.
The motion is seconded by Commissioner Landry. Any further discussion on this item before we bring it to a vote? Or on the motion, I should say. Okay, then I'll call for a voice vote. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Aye. Chair votes aye. Any opposed, say nay.
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 The motion passes four to two. Okay. That brings us to Public Hearing, Section G. Yep, let's take a 10-minute break at this time. We'll reconvene at 7:23.
Recording stopped.
So it's 7:23. I will call the meeting back to order.
Recording in progress.
Let's continue now with items. I've actually been advised by staff that Items G1 and 2, which are both Calidro LLC, are going to be presented together since they are related projects. So without further ado, I would invite a staff report on Items G1 and 2. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair Levy, members of the commission, good evening. Stephen Santos presenting the Calidro projects. Do you have a screen share going on? See if that comes over. As previously mentioned, these are two separate projects on adjacent parcels that share facilities. So it's being presented in one presentation. One project is a conditional use permit. The other project is a special permit. The projects are located in the Dinsmore area, and access is taken off of River Road and County Line Creek Road, which ultimately takes access off of Highway 36. You have to go out to Trinity County first and then come back west to access the property. We've got two 40-acre legal parcels with an RA40 designation and an FR zoning with a B540 combining zone. As you can see in the image, we've got three cultivation areas total, two on the parcel to the east, that's the conditional use permit, one on the parcel to the west, that's the special permit. And then we have a well providing irrigation water to both parcels through an easement, and that parcel to the north is under separate ownership. The conditional use permit is for 17,000 square feet of existing mixed light with a 10% ancillary nursery. The special permit is for 5,000 square feet of existing mixed light and 1,500 square feet of existing outdoor with a 600-square-foot ancillary nursery. On-site processing is proposed to occur on that eastern parcel, Parcel 14. The water and power profile of these projects are as follows. For the conditional use permit, we're looking at 185,000 gallons from the well with an additional 150,000 gallons of hard tanks proposed for a total of 180,000 gallons of storage. There are two generators providing power to each to those two cultivation areas. The special permit on Parcel 13 will use 55,000 gallons annually from the well. An additional 45,000 gallons of proposed hard tanks will bring the total of storage to 57,000 gallons. One generator is associated with this project. The project does have the standard condition of approval to migrate to renewable energy source by January 2026, reserving generator usage for emergency purposes only. As mentioned, the well is located on the parcel to the north, Parcel Number 9. It's owned by a totally different party from the applicant. There is a recorded easement for use of the well. The well was evaluated by a hydrologist, which concluded that the use of the well for cannabis irrigation will not impact surface waters or springs. And this slide just gives some of the general information about distances and elevation. For example, the Mad River is over 1,000 feet away, 435 feet. The well's over 400 feet higher than the river. We've got two springs, one to the northeast, one to the northwest of the well. Each are about a quarter mile away. And then the springs are higher in elevation than the well. The hydrologist also included estimations and discussion about the groundwater recharge for the parcel with the well, estimating groundwater recharge is around 6.5 million gallons and 13 million gallons annually. When compared to the project demand of 240,000 gallons for both parcels, it's a very small percentage of the expected recharge, even on the conservative side of that spectrum. The well is located near some surface waters that are categorized or classified as ephemeral or episodic. And so staff, when staff looked at that, we concluded that it's unlikely that those ephemeral surface waters are affected by the use of the well. However, just for security, there is a recommended condition of approval for forbearance of the well. And given the amount of water storage that is proposed for the project, then there's ample water storage to collect water for the growing season for that forbearance period. For the COP, on that eastern parcel, Parcel 14, there is also some onsite relocation and restoration proposed. There's an excerpt from the plot plan over there on the right side of the slide. That red box down towards the bottom of that excerpt is the restoration area. The moving of the cannabis and the consolidation of that cannabis has already occurred. The applicant, as part of their operations plan and some supplements, has recommended removing historical cannabis infrastructure, planting of coyote brush. But staff is recommending some additional elements to that restoration plan to include monitoring period, success criteria, as well as the addition of a native grass seed mix for erosion control. As mentioned in the staff report, current and past violations are a major issue for this project, and so it'd be appropriate to summarize them. Consultation with CDFW revealed that there is an existing notice of violation on that parcel to the north that has the well. Additional coordination with CDFW and evaluation by staff determined that access to the well, maintenance of the well, connection of water lines to the well will pass through that area subject to that NOV. Therefore, there is a nexus between this project and that NOV. Therefore, staff is recommending a condition of approval that prior to the applicant being able to use this well, they must provide documentation demonstrating that they're in compliance with the LSAA related to that NOV. One of the other previous violations occurring on that eastern parcel was there was grading within the riparian buffer of a Class 3 water course. And so there's a staff recommended condition of approval prior to using greenhouses 1 through 3 within that western area, western cultivation area. The applicant must restore the slope to its natural contours within that riparian buffer and have a stormwater plan reviewed and approved by the department to ensure there won't be any sediment loading into that channel prior to being able to utilize that flat. And that condition came about through consultation with CDFW as well. This site was also the subject to or the recipient of a law enforcement abatement in 2020. And following that, the site condition got degraded. There was trash and non-native soils that weren't being managed properly. When I inspected it two years ago, it was documented, and some additional actions were given to the applicant to conduct. We've received some documentation from the applicant's agent with some photos, some receipts that demonstrate that significant effort has been made to remedy that. However, staff is recommending a condition of approval prior to commencing operation, that they schedule a post-approval inspection with the department and have someone from the department go out there and inspect on site just to give it one final sign-off that everything has been resolved in terms of cleaning up the site from that event. There was significant grading of both parcels, both before and after 2016. And so the compliance agreement for these permits will require completing the after-the-fact grading permit process. This, these properties were an active code enforcement case for a while, and they went through a compliance agreement with code enforcement, which in part required them to initiate the grading permit process, and they've done that. So code enforcement has released their case, but the applicant still needs to complete that process, and that'll then get, that handshake has happened, and then that would happen as part of the compliance agreement. And then on that western parcel, Parcel 13, part of the grading involved realignment of a stream channel. And so the applicant provided a disturbed area stabilization plan created by Pacific Watershed and Associates. And implementation of that stabilization plan is a recommended condition of approval, and that includes restoration of that channel. Here are just some photos. Now, I've just been talking at you just to kind of give you a sense of what all of that looked like. This is the area where there was encroachment into a Class 3 area with grading. These are, you're seeing the flat where greenhouses 1 through 3 will be. Those greenhouse frames have actually been removed, and the cultivation is being shifted away from that buffer. And this is the flat that will require a little bit more re-contouring and stormwater plan before cultivation can occur on that flat. This is the other cultivation area on Parcel 14. This is a good example of what it looked like, you know, following the law enforcement abatement. And you can get a sense of the slopes for this parcel. They're very steep, and so some of the materials were beginning to migrate downhill. They included not just plastic containers, but also non-native soils containing pearly. This shot is just another to demonstrate how steep the slopes are in the area and some of the cuts. And so getting those after-the-fact grading permits and stabilizing those slopes would be great. And then this final photo is from the western parcel, Parcel 13, down at the bottom, the one subject to the special permit. This is where the stream channel was realigned. And it was actually realigned on the other side of the road outside the frame of this photo to the left. So the stream channel will be restored here. Lastly, I want to talk about the access to the parcel. There's approximately eight miles of privately maintained access. That stretch of road was evaluated by an engineer. This joint road evaluation is shared by other cannabis applicants and permates that take access off the same road. So the condition of approval, as it appears in these staff reports, are identical or nearly identical to the conditions of approval that show up in those other staff reports just to keep them all aligned and synced up. The engineer made several recommendations that you can see on the screen there. And so there is a condition of approval that the applicant must participate in the road maintenance association, but it also includes language that if one isn't formed or if something else happens, the applicant is still required to contribute to the improvements, repair, and maintenance, no matter what. And so that, you know, whether it's through the RMA or not, the applicant must contribute as part of their permit. So standard staff recommendation, find the PC, the planning commission is considered the MND in the addendum. Find the projects comply with the general plan and the zoning ordinance, and approve the COP and SP subject to recommended conditions of approval. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Santos. Any questions or comments for staff on the report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In going through the list of violations over time, is there, was there a change in ownership at any time throughout there?
Yes. The current applicant isn't the same as the original applicant, but many of these violations occurred after that change in ownership.
Do we know when the change of ownership occurred?
I do not have that at my fingertips.
Well, when the law enforcement came to the property in June of 2020 because the cultivation was occurring without permits and exceeded the historical baseline, was that the current applicant or the previous applicant?
I don't know for sure. We'll try and get it from a cell, but I think it was under the current applicant. But the applicant and the applicant's agent is, are in Zoom, and so they'd be able to confirm if we're unable to access the information remotely.
Any other questions for staff on the report at this time before we go to public comment? We'll wait for that. Okay, then we will go to public comment, and as usual, I will invite the applicant or their agent to speak first, and they will have a further chance to reply or rebut later if they wish. But I see a hand raised for Nathan Whittington, agent for Calidro. So I would recognize you, Mr. Whittington. You have three minutes, or actually, you have more than three minutes. You can take 10 minutes if you wish to make a presentation.
Thank you, commissioners. This is Nathan Whittington. I'm an agent for Calidro, and I'll try and keep this concise and keep us on track. You have a huge workload today. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So I came into this project a little over a year ago to help bring everything forward and make sure everything is done appropriately and moving in the right direction. The applicant has done extreme work in resolving the historic violations on this property. I inspected the site back in September of '22 and again in January during the winter. Took a lot of photos demonstrating the cleanup that has been done and also the stabilization of the different areas on the property that were subject to historic grading. What we were looking for is to make sure there was no mobilization of grading. What we were looking for is to make sure there was no mobilization of perlite or other materials into waterways. And I was able to confirm that with photographic evidence that was submitted to the department. Part of the historic concerns around this project stemmed from the original owner's area of cultivation assertions in his original application, and the manner in which the applicant moved forward without appropriate approvals. Now that we have gone through the violation process, paid substantial fines, created a very thorough analysis of restoration of the disturbed waterways, and most of that work has been completed under assigned LSA, and that's what got us to where we are today. The one issue I would like to discuss is in relation to Project APN ending in 014. And the applicant wants me to raise the issues of the cultivation area verification. The original owner applied under 22,500 square feet. We have an analysis from PWA in 2018 showing 20,500, and now we're at 17,500. That's the one issue. Next is, I would like to talk about condition number 14 in relation to the generator. On parcel 014, there was a stream, Class III drainage that was repaired and recoverted and brought up to good specs with adequate setbacks. As a result of that, the historic cultivation that did span that disturbed area is now split into two zones. And so, the amended plan has two 5,000-watt generators, one for each site, so that we're not crossing the repaired stream channel. So, I would like to revisit that as well. The applicant does pay into the Neighborhood Road Association. Most of the LSA work has been completed. The violations have been substantially resolved. And all in all, the applicant now understands exactly what needs to be done, and we have worked diligently with the department to make sure we will have adequate inspections to look at any future problems and make sure all historic problems are resolved. And I am available to answer any questions on this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whittington. Any questions at this time for the agents?
Yes, sir, Chair.
Yes, Mr. Commissioner Landry.
Thank you, Agent. And I was curious if you could help me better understand the...So, we got two different parcels. You were discussing how not crossing the repaired stream bed area. Could you revisit that and make me feel comfortable around the idea of the two different parcels not having to...Well, how does crossing the river and all that take place?
So, what we're looking at is on parcel 014, there's a western cultivation site, and then there's a southeastern cultivation site. Under the violations, that Class III drainage had been filled in, and it was all one large cultivation site. Now that it has been repaired and restored, now we have two separate sites. There is a road and a culvert, and I'm sure Mr. Santos can talk about the record of that that I provided in my September images. So, rather than having one contiguous site with a destroyed waterway, the waterway has been restored, and we have two separate sites with buffers around each. And that's what gets me to the discussion around condition 14 of the two generators. The original permit asked for one generator to encompass the entire site, and it wasn't a much larger generator. So, now we're looking for smaller generator use with all the other conditions regarding buffers and decibel levels and containment, and those will be phased out as part of the conditions of approval by 2026.
Yes, Commissioner O'Neill.
I'm trying to understand, this is for staff and the agent, the permit or the report says 17,000 square feet, but I thought I heard him say that he thought it should be 20,500?
I heard 17,500. I'm sorry. I didn't hear that very well.
I'm trying to understand these numbers that were thrown out in terms of what size of cultivation area in 14, because the report says 17,000 square feet, and then you said something different. So, are you disputing the staff recommendation?
Yes. The original application and referrals was for 21,750 square feet. Maps provided in '18 showed a total of 21,000. And then, we have a report that was prepared by Pacific Watershed that was submitted to the department in 2021 that addressed that lower flat area and the other areas, and that's what gets us to this 20,500.
So, if that's the case, is this even ready for consideration? If there's still disagreement on the size of the cultivation area, it seems like it needs to go back to staff.
I think this is ready under the staff approval. If you were willing to address the additional square footage, we would go back to staff and work that out and make sure we have appropriate zones for it. But I don't want that to be the thing that stops us.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna...Let's just get through the rest of public comments, and then we'll bring this back to staff for further discussion of that point. Okay? Thank you, Mr. Whittington, for being willing to take questions. I do see one other hand raised on Zoom. Before I go to that, I just want to make sure, is there anyone in the room who would wish to comment on item G1 or G2, Calidro LLC? Not seeing any hands in the room. I will go to Zoom. We have two hands raised in addition now, first being Public 5288. You have three minutes, please.
Hello, Ken Sawowski. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I apologize for not attending the meeting earlier. I was crafting and drafting the...We'll basically unwind this whole thing in the future, which would be an initiative. I'll have to go over the ballot. Two-point office not approved. So, anyway, this is a prime example of something that is not ready. I concur with Commissioner Peggy O'Neill. And putting the two together, there's so many questions here. You have obviously a bad player, and it wasn't the prior person. It sounds like this person has been a bad player. And I think that this...It was kind of distressing to see that you're conditioning upon inspections, which your staff should have done already to bring this forward to you folks. So, this is very distressing. So, I highly recommend that you go ahead and table this until such time as you can get staff to answer all the questions here. The generators now are off to 2024 or '26 or whatever it is. And I think you should be shortening the period according to state guidelines, everybody's desire to get rid of all the fossil fuels generators. And instead of extending this as you're going along here, that should be shortening up. So, I feel you're going in the wrong direction as far as conditioning. There is no reason for a grow of this size to have generated at all. They can go straight to solar, straight to some other form of energy. And so, anyway, that's my input for tonight, and I guess I look forward to listening to your comments and your decision. Thank you for having me speak.
Thank you, sir. And we have one other hand up, which is Public 7108. Go ahead. It's your three minutes.
Thank you. I also had questions about what was actually pre-existing. So, I'm looking forward to seeing what that comes up with. And I'm also concerned about all the grading and questions whether grading that was done after 2016, with the orders saying that for new cultivation has to be on slopes less than 15% or 15% of that. And where they've graded all of these terraces and flats, is this going to be...Are they then going to be able to have cultivation on those places, or also be able to grade it more to flatten them out and extend them? I'm also concerned about the well water and the fact that we are still in a drought, and how much is actually going to percolate down. I don't think we've had enough rain to percolate very far down. So, anyway, those are my concerns. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Seeing no other hands raised, I will now close the public comment portion of this hearing. Bring it back to the commission for discussion or further questions of staff.
I would like staff to respond to what I said earlier about the 17,000 versus 21,750.
So, as we've seen already just tonight and in other projects, the cultivation area verification can evolve over time as new information is provided. One of the challenges that happens sometimes on the applicant's side is understanding the performance standards we use when we do the cultivation area verification. And one of those standards is the concept of a base year. As we know, with cultivation is illegal, cultivation areas moved around a lot. Sometimes it's for practical purposes for better sunlight, but also just to move it around so to stay hidden. And so, often applicants say, oh, I've got more cultivation, but they're adding and mixing multiple base years rather than focusing on, hey, you know, what did you have in a particular year? And one of the dynamics that can occur when we look from year to year, we can be like, okay, wow, you've got 20,000 in one year, but it's outdoor. But if you really want mixed light and want to maximize your mixed light, then we're looking at a different year, and that number is less. When we first did the cultivation area verification for the CUP parcel, Application 10656, parcel 14, our original cab looked at the year 2014 and only came out with about 14,500, 15,000 total square footage, and a big chunk of that was outdoor. However, we got this PWA report that Nate referenced that says, hey, look at these documents we got from a law enforcement action in 2011, and look at these photos that were taken in 2011. And we rarely are able to access evidence from that year that show, look, there was wiring, there were more hoop houses. And so, when we looked at that documentation and evaluated it, both Cliff and I evaluated it, we're like, okay, yes, we can support mixed light and up to 17,000. And we actually amended the interim permit to be 17,000 mixed light based on that 2011 evidence. So, the application materials that we had from the applicant and the applicant's agent are for the amount recommended in the staff recommendation, are for the 17,000, and that's what the project was noticed for. So, this late request to include cultivation from the restoration area and other areas that weren't in the same year that we looked at, I don't know how to respond to that other than, you know, my recommendation is based on the materials that we have from the applicant and based on a thorough analysis of the evidence that we have.
And it would seem to me that they would have had ample opportunity to come in and say, whoa, 17 is not correct, before it got to us.
Yes. And the applicant, I had a conversation with the applicant, and it's been some time since I've had this conversation, that if you want to request more, if you believe that we did not properly review the evidence, you can request more, and we can notice it for that, and you can bring your evidence to the planning commission. That was not done. We were given an operations plan and a site plan for 17,000 mixed light. And so, that's what was noticed, and that's what staff brought tonight.
So, in my opinion, it either moves forward at 17,000, or they pull it and it goes back, and we bring it back at a future point. Maybe the same, or possibly if you buy into whatever they submit, it could change, but that wouldn't be something we would just decide tonight to change something.
I have no evidence to give you to suggest that there's a different amount.
Well, plus, it was noticed.
Yeah. No, I would agree with that. Yeah. Commissioner O'Neill.
From a legal perspective, that's absolutely the truth. The legal notice, the project description, everything is 17,000 square feet. The commission really can't go above that tonight.
I just want to add real quickly, too. If we were to consider, you know, doing that and re-revealing it, that would involve referring this to the various agencies that would have a chance to review the application. It would involve requiring a whole other set of application materials. So, it would not be just a quick turnaround sort of thing.
Yeah. And I think I heard the agent say he would not want to hold this up from approval tonight on that ground. So, and...So, yes, Commissioner Mitchell.
Thank you. So, I'm confused, I guess, by the timeline. Again, did you say that there was an interim permit granted at some point?
There was.
What year was that?
I'll have to go back. But before I do that, let me answer your previous question. That was with regard to when the transfer happened. The law enforcement abatement was in July of 2020, or June of 2020, and we got the permit transfer request in August, so two months later.
Okay. I guess where I'm going with this, when did we get an interim permit, is how was there law enforcement action without a permit if they were granted an interim permit?
The interim permit was given after the transfer, after the law enforcement action, and after the fines were paid by the new applicant.
Okay. So, is there a reason?
Right.
Got it. Thank you.
And can I just ask, based on your recollection of the interactions of the record of this applicant and this application, or these applications, in the time since that transfer was made in August of 2020 and the interim permit was granted, have you generally found this applicant to be responsive to county requests and fairly credible in making good on their commitments?
Chair, you're asking a very blunt question. This has been a very challenged project, a very difficult struggle to just to bring it forward to decision. There were attempts to bring it forward to decision a year ago. I know this project has had multiple agents and consultants touch it, and that's been one of the challenges, is it hasn't been fully integrated. One of the reasons the condition of approval was suggested for an onsite inspection before operations resume is because it took a long time to get some of that documentation that Nate described, the photos, the receipts. They were requested within a few months of the inspection, but it took over a year to start getting them, and they started trickling in. But we did get them, and at least some. And so, it wasn't complete radio silence, but it did take a while, and I would characterize it as a bit of a struggle.
Thank you. And I'm gonna ask, and try and get a different matter that I think needs to be addressed. Not as far as how cooperative they were, or how long it took to get stuff in, but there's a long history of violations. Have there been any violations of rules that they've agreed to follow that this applicant has not?
There has been additional grading with this current applicant.
How much of the grading that we read about in the CDFW letter is under the current?
It's hard to tell, being onsite, where you get a sense of grading having occurred at different times, just based on how the cuts look and how the color of the soil looks. And so...
Was it substantive?
It would be speculative for me to try and really proportion it out.
Was a substantial amount done in the current?
Yeah. And that was documented as part of the code enforcement case. And, you know... If I may, I'd also like to address the generator issue that came up. Mr. Whittington was referring to condition of approval 14. That is a condition of approval A14 for application 10863. And I will attempt to do a screen share of the site plan for that project. Excellent. And so what that condition of approval pertains to is you can see the cultivation area there in green off to the right flush with the eastern parcel boundary. And then across the streams, there's another slender green rectangle, that's the nursery. And so condition of approval A14 says, hey, you've identified putting this generator right next to this cultivation area, which makes sense because that's some of its mixed light. But if you plan to power your nursery, which is on the other side of those channels, we still need to work on how that's going to happen, that the generator that's on the eastern side of those channels cannot be used for that nursery because it's over 300 feet away and it's crossing watercourses. And no plan or discussion or content was provided on how that would be served with electricity, if it's intended to be served with electricity. So, if that's the applicant's intent, they'll need to come back and explain that.
Thank you. And can you just clarify when that, was there a conversation about this or was this something that was just put into the conditions of approval as we now see it? I mean, I'm.
Well, it gets back to some of the earlier discussion about, you know, how this all evolved and how things were provided. And so we've gone through many, many iterations of the site plan. And then I got an iteration where all the generators disappeared. And then there was an iteration where, you know, a generator was shown, but it was like 800 feet away. And so I said, I need, we need to know how many generators were there going to be. And so at some point, you know, a decision was just been made, you know, we've got to move forward and bring this forward to a decision. And as staff, you know, I did the best I could with the evidence and the materials I had and tried to address it accordingly through these conditions.
Thank you.
I'll just go ahead and reiterate. My general concern for placing trust in applicants who demonstrate an inability to follow rules that they've already been assigned. That being said, in this particular instance where the applicant did show up and has demonstrated some substantial effort towards getting to compliance, I could see myself supporting this project with potentially some additional inspections to be paid for by the applicant.
I do see that the agent has raised his hands, and since we are discussing things that might benefit from his answers, I am going to allow Mr. Whittington to speak again and to answer and to clarify what we've been discussing or answer any further questions on the matter. Mr. Whittington, go ahead.
Thank you, Commissioner Levy. I apologize, I was looking at the wrong conditions in relation to the generator discussion. Yeah, we do not have generators as part of the plan for the nursery, so I would like to backtrack on that if you allow me. And we will pursue, you know, an alternate renewable source prior to initializing that area. Secondly, you know, I know this was the place absent complete agreement with the planning department in regards to historic cultivation area verification. And I know that's been challenging for all of us through the course of all this, all these years of going through these projects of, you know, everybody tried to hide it for so long. And so how do we adequately, you know, approve the correct square footage? I'm in alignment with the department on the 17,000 square feet. I just wanted to raise the issue to show how difficult this has been in regards to different agency input, in regards to historic verification. And then finally, in regards to the grading activity, the most, there were grading permits for these parcels and the applicant did go outside the scope of those. And that was the main process of the subject of inspections that I did back in September and then stabilization over the winter. And, you know, the big area was in parcel 013 below the flat where the current cultivation for this project is situated. That site has been completely remediated and I went back in January after I inspected in September and saw some perlite still in the other graded zone. I advised the applicant to go in there and mitigate that, and then I inspected in January to make sure that mitigation had been done. And it was done. And, you know, part of this moving forward is clear communication between all the different agencies and making sure we're in alignment. And I'm absolutely in alignment with the planning department as to all the conditions and the scope of the project as noticed. And I can answer any questions you might have.
Well, thank you. That was very helpful. Any other questions for Mr. Whittington? No, then thank you. We'll let you go. Okay. Well, that does resolve a couple of my concerns about this. How do we want to proceed?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I like Commissioner Mitchell's suggestion, and I like that suggestion to include our CDFW partners with our planning department as we did in the prior one.
Okay, so are you specifically referring to, I think it was condition 11 of the CUP permit, which scheduled a, because I've been switching back and forth between these two. But yeah, it.
For the wording, I like the wording in that.
Right. And that's referring to the extra post-approval inspection, which we've got in there as, I believe, condition 11. Yes.
That's what I'm after, sir.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Landry. I would support that as well. Someone want to make a motion?
that we adopt the resolution of Calidro LCD conditional use permit and finds that the planning commission has considered the mitigating negative declaration for the commercial medical marijuana land use ordinance and the addendum that was prepared for the Calidro LLC project and finds that the proposed project complies with the general plan and zoning ordinance and approves the conditional use subject to the recommendations and considerations of Exhibit A and that we have further monitoring at the owner's expense. I believe the way that that was determined in the last one, I'd like to mimic that, and I believe that was for three years. There is a yearly and a potential random with 24-hour notice. If there are no issues pending those, then we can drop them. And that also include CDFW as a partner in that evaluation.
We have a motion, Director Ford, do you need clarification on that?
Well, I just want to make sure that is this a one-at-a-time motion or is this for both permits?
I actually wanted to clarify that as well. Can we amend the motion to apply to both the Calidro conditional use permit and the Calidro special permit?
That is my intention. Thank you, Chair.
Okay. Sure.
I'll second the motion.
And are the modifications made to the inspection condition to align with what we did on the last project?
That is my understanding of what the motion is, yes. We will repeat that language.
Great. Thank you. Okay, then we have a motion, and did we get a second? Commissioner Mitchell seconded Commissioner Landry's motion. Can I go ahead then and call for a voice vote on this matter? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Didn't think so. Okay, then we have unanimously passed items one and two, the Calidro LLC conditional use permit and special permit. Okay, let's see if we can get through the rest of this agenda. We've still got three more items, I believe. And I know there's some folks waiting in the audience for those items, so let's, now, I would invite a staff report on the Peaks View Incorporated special permit modification, please.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Portia Sossado, the assigned planner for the Peaks View Incorporated modification The project is located in the Harris area on the west side of Bell Springs Road, approximately one mile west from intersection, from the intersection of Harris Road and Bell Springs Road. The project is located on APN 216082 and 002 and also on 216082006. The modification is to move some cultivation area around on the parcels, and it is for an acre. And the water source is a rainwater catchment pond of 1 million gallons. And there's also 10 5,000 gallon rainwater catchment storage tanks proposed as part of the modification, actually the original permit. And the power is from a generator for some existing mixed light of 8,640 square feet. And there's processing onsite and there's 12 employees. the modification was needed for a specific reason. The previously permitted cultivation area was approved based on a site plan that had information indicating that no trees had, would be removed. However, after approval, it was discovered that while this area may not have had any trees in 2021, at the time of the project approval, it was actually found to have an existing oak woodland prior to January 1st, 2016. Further, the area was graded and fill was applied, and the area will be remediated and restocked as a condition of approval, which I'll talk about later. So, the modification comes in two phases, and here's the site plan showing the revised location configuration of the proposed site with both Phase 1 and Phase 2 shown in the Phase 1 is to utilize a naturally flat area on the northern portion of the northern parcel. And this area has already been graded and greenhouse has been erected prior to approving this modification. This area will be remediated after Phase 2 construction is complete. Phase 2 is 34,560 square feet of cultivation. It will be allocated within 490 by 96 hoop houses on two proposed graded flats that each have an area of 36,000 feet. The greenhouses will be required to be outdoor only until either PG&E or onsite renewable energy has been developed for that cultivation area. This area down here is what will remain on the lower, the southern parcel. That will be the existing mixed light. And that will be, and everything else will be moving to the northern Phase 2 area. So, I'd like to point out a few of the key conditions of approval in attachment 1A. We've got several comments from CDFW and other agencies, so I'm going to go through those now and hopefully answer or address some concerns with this project. No grading is permitted in the areas that exceed 15% in grade. The grading plan submitted for approval of a grading permit shall show both existing and proposed contours at no less than two feet contour intervals. And all proposed ground disturbances must be limited to areas of 15% grade or less. The applicant shall adhere to the recommendations of the timber conversion evaluation report conducted June 16, 2021, and oak woodland restoration plan conducted by Timber Resource Consultants November 23, 2021. The applicant shall obtain a raptor survey during the breeding season prior to any construction activities onsite. If nesting raptors are found, the applicant shall follow all recommendations from the project biologist, the project biologist and subject to an amendment by CDFW if there is a need. The applicant shall adhere to the recommendations of the botanical report conducted July 5, 2022, and a botanical survey, and the biological survey that was conducted July 5, 2022. All generators are only permitted for the existing, only generators are permitted for the 8,640 square feet on the southern parcel for the mixed light of existing that was previously approved. All use of generators except for backup purposes shall be phased out by January 1st, 2026. The applicant shall submit and implement a plan for PG&E renewable energy or other onsite renewable energy to support the project. This plan shall be implemented no later than January 1st, 2026. An engineer or licensed geologist shall assess the slopes in the Phase 1 area and in the oak conversion area and submit a slope stability evaluation. In areas where slope failure from grading has occurred, banks shall be laid back to slopes that are stable. The graded area shall be fully removed from the streamside management area. A qualified professional geologist shall assess the graded site and provide specific mitigation measures to fix the failures associated with the grading on parcel, on the northern parcel, in both Phase 1, in both Phase 1 areas. And where the oak woodland removal happened. The unauthorized oak woodland conversion of 2.24 acres on parcel, on the northern parcel, shall be fully contoured and restocked back to pre-conversion natural conditions. Prior to the approval of the grading plans for Phase 2, the applicant shall submit a drainage and erosion control plan, which demonstrate that implement stormwater management that ensures runoff is routed into settling basins or bio swells and would not cause substantial increases in peak flow. and would not cause substantial increases in peak flow to the headwater streams. The applicant shall upgrade all 15 stream crossings in the Lake and Streambed Alteration Agreement, LSA, as memorialized in the November 2020 LSA agreement signed by the applicant with CDFW. The upgrades to the stream crossings shall be completed no later than October 15th, 2024. Prior to the issuance of building permits or initiation of any activities requiring the use of electricity, the applicant shall provide documentation demonstrating adequate electricity is available to the project site to the satisfaction of the planning director. Generator use will be, generator use for the cultivation other than that being utilized for the previously approved 8,640 square feet of mix slate on the southern parcel is prohibited. And so those are the conditions that I thought were really important to go over considering the, the comments that we received from the agencies. And this concludes my presentation and I welcome any questions and I believe the applicant is attended by Zoom, so.
Thank you very much for that report. Okay, Commissioner Mitchell, then Commissioner O'Neill.
Thank you. The, the oak area that was taken down, was that by the applicant and not disclosed to us or is that under a different applicant?
That, that was by this applicant, yes.
Okay, then did we consider, I assume that you're proposing it to be restored at a one to one basis? Have?
It's specified within the plan for the oak restoration and I don't remember, it might be three to one, I think that sounds right.
It says three to one mitigation for the loss of oak woodland.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Yeah. Oh Commissioner O'Neill, I'm sorry.
So how close is existing PG&E service to this parcel?
It is, I guess accessible from where Phase Two is proposed, which was a big reason why they wanted to put it there is so they could access the PG&E power.
So how close is that PG&E power?
It's pretty close to the road.
Yeah, we can bring up a map here. The, our understanding is that PG&E is in, on Alderpoint Road. And so that is the closest portion of the property to Alderpoint Road.
But you had, I think from listening to you, you have a, if they don't get it by a certain date, they must go to renewable because PG&E may or may not be able to meet those deadlines.
That's correct. We did not receive a letter from PG&E stating that the, that power would be available to the parcel.
If I could just clarify also, the, there's actually two different things going on here because there was the 8,640 square feet, I believe, of pre-existing cultivation that was occurring before 2016 that is being utilized, they're using a generator for that currently. And under the ordinance, they would be allowed to continue to use a generator for the pre-existing cultivation. So all of the new, which is the remainder of that, that makes up the acre, needs to be renewable energy either onsite or through PG&E. And so there's two things that we are suggesting should be applied here as conditions. One is that by January 1st of 2026, the existing 8,640 square feet of cultivation be converted to renewable energy. And second, all of the new cultivation would be required to be through either onsite renewable or PG&E. So they do believe that they will hopefully be able to get PG&E by locating it closer to Alderpoint Road. But in the event that that does not happen, they would be limited to outdoor only with no power or onsite renewable.
Just a clarification, that second category which, which is new, you're saying it, it cannot have any period of time when, when it's supplied by generator? It has to be renewable or PG&E from the start?
That is correct. And just to further add, that is, that is how the original permit was approved.
Okay.
So that's not being proposed to be changed here. It's just that relocating closer to the road actually does seem to help them to potentially have that opportunity for PG&E.
Got it. Thank you. Well, any other questions about the staff report before we go to public comment? Chair, oh yes.
So some of the conditions of approval seem to have some dates attached to them or some of them were, were things that were set back in time, a significant amount back in time. Do we have any evidence that some of those have been addressed?
If you could, an example?
I don't have it in front of me, but as I was going through your list.
Yeah, we'll take a look here, but one of the things that the conditions are referring to are some restoration plans that, I think it's referring to the date that the restoration plan was prepared. I believe that might be what you're referring to.
And there's also the Lake and Streamside Alteration Agreement. So that, that happened in 2020 and so they had, CDFW wanted more, wanted them to amend that and they had more comments about that, that they added to the modification. Does that make sense?
Okay, so along those lines is, have, have those things been addressed?
No, not currently.
Thank you.
Other thoughts? Are we ready to move this one forward? I mean, I'll just ask a final question. I, oh, I'm so sorry. My, yes. I should, I just said that and then I forgot. We do have a hand raised, but before we go to other public comment, I do want to invite the applicant or applicant's agent, if they are here to comment first or if they're on Zoom. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to comment on this Peaks View Incorporated project? Nope. Then I see one hand on Zoom, so I will go to public 5288. And there's another hand coming up now. Yes, go ahead. It's your three minutes.
Ken Stowowski, I, I did want to bring forward to your attention that approximately six months ago, my understanding is the, have any of you heard of shaded parcels before? I don't know whether you have, but this was a very contentious thing in the past and I think Cliff was involved in rectifying it. Anyway, I, I was informed that when it comes to real estate sales, that there actually is a determination has to be made or to be checked upon whether it's a legal parcel. My thing, and I don't know, maybe it's being addressed on every single one of these, but I think one of your conditions should be the same as transfer. The entitlements that you're giving these people or these people have is based upon being a legal parcel. So you may wish to ask your staff or John Ford to address all of these on an individual basis. Has there been a determination that these projects and these permits you're issuing are on legal parcels? And I think the same determination should go through the same process. My understanding costs about $2,000 to do or whatever for people who have to, to rectify and have that determination made. So again, I highly suggest that this always be a condition that they prove that they actually have a legal, legally created parcel prior to them receiving any entitlements for any permit. Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
Thank you, sir. And the other hand that's up on Zoom is Kevin, are you by any chance Kevin Peak, the owner or applicant?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thought you might be, so I just want to give you additional time. You could have more than three minutes if you wish. Don't feel the need to go on that long however, but anything you, you wanted to share with us or make yourself available for questions?
Yes, yes, I'll try to keep it quick. The oak area, first of all, that was addressed, those trees came down from a storm and I cleaned it up. And I've always been a good steward of the land and when a tree comes down, I clean it up, I burn it, I make sure it's not going to be a fire hazard down the road. The same flat that, the setback that was recommended is from this past winter. We had, as everyone knows, we had a gnarly winter, tons of rain and all over the property, there are hundreds of trees down. There's, there's damage and I mean, there's a bunch of water going down each stream. And there's a lot of erosions in places all over the entire 400 acres. The PG&E is around 500, plus or minus 500 feet from the Phase Two site. And I tried to get PG&E several years ago to start doing this project, or a couple of years ago, I'm sorry, to do this project. And they told me they would not start their engineering until I had an exact area determined. So, and once we get approved, I can continue this process with them and will continue this process with them. As far as the LSA, we've, we added one culvert that was added to get access up to the pond. And we have fixed some minor issues on other crossings. Cut the end of one culvert off, unplugged a couple that branches had fallen in. So, and we've held off on doing everything else because it is a big, very expensive to do every single area. And we're going to do it all at once. It's not going to be in phases. We're going to knock it all out. Once we get machines in there, it's going to be a process. The raptor study, I, we had a bird study done and maybe I'm getting, I don't, I have it confused, but we did have a nesting bird study done to make sure there were no endangered species anywhere in the area and none were found. Those are all the notes that I have.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from the Commission for Mr. Peak? Yes, Commissioner Landry.
Thank you for commenting, owner. And I'm curious to the, your explanation on the additional grading that was happening.
The additional grading on Phase One was simply top slope. It was top slope taken off. We had bear come out and verify that it was nowhere near the 50 cubic yard minimum to move around. And the, what CDFW was talking about is again, storm damage from this past winter. It was a stabilized slope. It did fail in one spot. It also, in other spots that have never been graded, also failed in the same water course. It was just a lot of water coming down from every angle. We don't plan on using the Phase One spot. We plan on using everything in the Phase Two spot.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the owner before we let him go? Okay, well, thank you again for being willing to answer our questions and I will now close public comments and bring it back to the Commission for deliberation.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt Resolution 23987, which does the following, finds planning commission is considered the addendum to the EIR and finds proposed project complies with general plan and zoning ordinance, approves a Peaks View special permit modification subject to recommended conditions of approval and approves the cultivation operations plan and the site plan.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion from Commissioner Scavdall, seconded by Commissioner O'Neill. Any further discussion on this motion? Okay, then I would call for a voice vote and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes aye. Any opposed? Say nay? Any abstain? Motion passes unanimously. Peaks View Incorporated special permit modification is approved as recommended. Okay, I think we can. I'm hoping we can still get through the two additional items. Actually, first, I guess we do have to make a motion to continue the GEC Moller, correct?
Yes, so moved.
Okay, we have a motion to continue item four, GEC Moller Coastal Development Permit. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, seconded by Commissioner Scavdall. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously. We will continue GEC Moller. Sorry, were we clear, continue to the July 20th meeting?
I believe that was to a date uncertain.
To a date uncertain. Okay, the motion was to continue it to a date uncertain and that motion has passed unanimously. And now we come to item G5, the Schneider Coastal Development Permit and Special Permit Modification and Lot Line Adjustment. And I would invite a staff report.
Thank you, Chair Levy and members of the Planning Commission. My name's Cliff Johnson with the Planning Department. I should have screen share popping up for this presentation. I'll try to keep it relatively brief. So this is a modification, an application to modify an approved coastal development permit and special permit and tacked on to that is a proposed lot line adjustment. The original approved project was in 2018 for an 8,000 square foot single family residence with an attached cellar and garage. Approximately 1,500 cubic yards of cut and fill was authorized and there was no tree removal proposed. And there was a 100 foot minimum setback from wetlands that was shown on the, the site plan and as part of the project. And that's very important because when you are more than 100 feet from wetlands or water courses, the project is in the local coastal jurisdiction. When you're less than 100 feet, it is in the appeals jurisdiction, which gives the California Coastal Commission much more oversight over the county's permitting process. And so, talk about some of the things that happened here in a minute, but some original permit conditions that actually were violated were no removal of vegetation within the wetland protection area, requirement to retain native blackberry. The area below the 40 foot contour was to be designated on building plans as non-buildable. And there was no vegetation removal allowed within 100 feet of the wetland setback. And so, as you can see here, there was a road or temporary access drive that was constructed within the wetland setback. A portion of the residence was also within the 100 foot setback. And within that area was vegetation removal, including removal of the native California blackberries. And so, in December of 2021, the planning department alerted to this fact and we've been working to try to resolve that ever since. Many of you recall last summer, we did have a couple of hearings where we were seeking to require mitigations and see if there's any way to keep the residence in its constructed location. So some of the impacts that occurred as a result of the unauthorized activity are shown here. Native blackberry removal in a wetland and approximately 1.2 acres of native blackberry was removed, including one 16 inch willow tree and four alder trees. All of those within the stream side, or the wetland setback area. This is showing you the, an aerial view showing what the property looks like currently, the two parcels. And then this red line is approximating the 100 foot setback. And this is important not only because being located within the 100 foot setback does give the Coastal Commission additional oversight over our permitting effort, but the Humboldt Bay Area Plan actually has a requirement that the setback be between 100 and 200 feet. And so here, it would be at a minimum 100 feet. And the coastal plan policy does say that setbacks of less than that distance may be permitted only when the prescribed buffer would prohibit development of the site for the principal use for which it's designated. So after further review and consultation with the California Coastal Commission, we've determined that there is no way for this residence to be permitted less than 100, 100 feet because it would not preclude development of the site for residential uses to, to locate it further away. And so because of that, what is currently in front of you is an application to modify that, to remove the entitlement to construct the residence, to remove the residence and all of the imported fill. to remove the residence and all of the imported fill, and to restore the site back to its pre-construction condition. And we do have a number of conditions of approval that are attempting to implement that. You can see some of them up here, they're in the staff report. Along with that is a lot line adjustment between the two parcels. What you're seeing here is the parcel with the residence on it, which will be removed, would get smaller in size, be approximately two and a half acres in size. The green is proposed to be one parcel. So you can see the, the area within 100 feet of the estuary is being adjusted into this larger parcel to be 3.65 acres. And as part of a, part of resolution of the notice of violation that has occurred here, the applicant is looking to actually dedicate that land in its entirety to the Three Weot area tribes. And so, approval of this lot line adjustment would help to facilitate that. And that's basically what we have in front of you. And I'd be happy to answer any questions I have.
Commissioner Mitchell.
So, I guess I find a huge logic gap. Perhaps a detail or conversation was left out. But the last time we talked, we said the house is essentially five feet too close to the wetland area. If the owner were willing to chop off the five feet or otherwise downsize the home so that it was outside that area, would that be, you know, something that would be entertained? And so I'm just not clear why we're talking about full-scale demolition while there were obviously a number of mistakes made. How did we get from your house is five feet over too far to tear it all down?
Absolutely. So, you know, we, this has been a long process, and we, the county had all along been seeking to find some sort of resolution that maybe would allow for the residence to be kept in some sort of fashion there. But because this is subject now, with it being located within 100 feet of the wetland, subject to coastal oversight from the Coastal Commission, they are a key player in these discussions. And in order to resolve those violations to the satisfaction of all parties, this was found to be the appropriate solution. This is an application to modify this, this permit that has been filed by the applicant. So, this is also the applicant's request.
Commissioner Landry.
So I'm curious, the area, so, so we're re-permitting some area, and there is an area that is, is thought to go back to the three recognized tribes that have Weot citizens in them. Will restoration happen on those? Is that part of the responsibility of the, of the owner?
Correct. Restoration is to happen on, there, there is a small portion of the land that would be adjusted, that would be conveyed to the tribes, that is going to require some restoration. And so the conditions are written in a manner to try to require that before that conveyance happens. And that's why you'll see in the conditions, there, there's a pretty aggressive timeline for some of those conditions.
Thank you.
I just have one clarification. You mentioned, you used the word dedication of the larger parcel, of the down slope parcel, to the Three Weot tribes. Do you mean conveyance of the fee title, or would it be a conservation easement, or what would it be?
Correct, sorry, I meant to say, yeah, conveyance and fee title.
Got it, okay, thank you. Commissioner O'Neill.
I just want to make sure I understand. And so then if the owner wants to use this parcel in the future for construction, they would come in and reapply for another permit?
Correct, yes, the one parcel that is, is getting smaller would need to come in front of
Back and start all over.
The county again, right, and go through the, the permit process.
Commissioner West.
With the conveyance of the parcel, I rewatched, I watched the previous meeting, and there was a lot of discussion around the challenge of all three of those tribes agreeing and how the agreement of that parcel would work out because there was a lack of agreement between the tribes. Can you talk about some of the details on, on how that conveyance is going to work?
That's a really good question. The intent here is to convey it to a landholding entity that all three of the tribes are in agreement for. And I, I do believe that has been an ongoing conversation with all three of those tribes. There, as, the most recent conversation that we have had has not had complete consensus, but I think that it's moving in that direction as to what that entity would look like.
I believe at that time, there was some discussion of the fact that the Weot, there's a Weot land trust that could be the vehicle for that, but
Correct, that, that is one of the options. There's also been some discussion about enrolling it with the federal government under all three tribes' names.
Director Ford, did you want to comment?
Yeah, part of the struggle that we had was to just make sure that all three tribes are at the table and are in agreement that nobody gets that down. And, and while that seems harsh or hard, that is the most equitable, equitable way to address this, we believe.
Okay. Yes, Commissioner West.
Have any of the tribes submitted comments about this particular, like, most recent action?
Not officially. One of the things that, the conditions of approval that we're recommending have been developed over the last year through many conversations with them. And they do include recommendations from the tribes that were submitted to the Planning Commission and probably should have been included in the staff report, but with the previous staff reports that came in front of the commission. So some of those are recommendations that came originally from, from the tribes.
Okay, well, if there's no further, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Scavdall, yes.
And you mentioned there's a fairly aggressive schedule, but, and there's an October, October 20th. I assume that's a weather-related deadline or, or something. I haven't tried to put together all the flow, a flow chart and a timeline of all the conditions and permits and grading plan approvals and other things that have to be done. And having this slip past a deadline would add insult to injury. So have you convinced yourself that we're going to, this can get done this year?
So, yes. Sometimes the county gets accused of being the holdup in these. And by the time it takes to issue the grading permit, we're, we're not going to hold this up like that. We, we will review it. We're not going to rubber stamp it. But we're, this will go to the top of the list. This is something that is important to get done.
Okay, Commissioner West.
With respect to the comments that we received from the Coastal Commission and I believe it was CDFW, can you talk about the choice not to include those in the conditions of approval?
Sure, thank you, thanks for noticing that. So, number one, we did include in the supplemental some revised conditions that do incorporate the CDFW comments. The Coastal Commission had some suggestions for further restrictions on the property, specifically the area below the 40-foot contour, as well as restrictions for the land to be adjusted that is proposed to be dedicated. That conveyance is happening under a separate process through our code enforcement process. So we chose not to, to include that. And the additional restriction that they are suggesting, while a good idea, we, we do believe that not only is that already a requirement of the coastal plan, but our intention here is to try to facilitate these actions as quickly as possible. And we do have generally everything that we need as far as the conveyance. We didn't want, feel that it was really justified to, to add additional requirements that might slow that process down.
Yes.
If it's going through the code enforcement process, why not also include it in, in this process? Is it because it's not, like, to a point where it's finalized? Or can you help me understand why, why it wouldn't be beneficial to also have it before us?
You're talking about the restriction on the 40-foot?
Yes.
They're really two different things. The code enforcement process not only does require that this violation be resolved, but it's been heavily focused on assessing penalties as does happen through the enforcement process. And that is what has led to the proposal to adjust the property and, and convey that to the tribes. And so we didn't really want to muddle the two together.
If I could just add to that, part of the focus of the way the lot line adjustment is configured is to address the, the damage that's been done to the tribes and, and make sure a sensitive area is addressed. It was less concerned with the 40-foot contour and more concerned with that. So the, the penalty portion of this, if you will, the dedication portion of this is really focused on, on, on that, addressing that violation, not so much future permitting. If that, I hope that helps clarify that a little bit.
Okay. Well, if there's no further questions for staff at this time, I would like to open up public comments. I would first invite the owner applicant, if he would wish to address us. You can go first, and you can take up to 10 minutes if you wish.
Travis Schneider, applicant and owner. Commissioner and staff, thank you for bringing this matter back before you. There are two details I'd like to bring to the Commission's attention. First, Condition Six requires us to complete all work removing and regrading the property by October 20th. It is our goal and desire to begin the corrective action as soon as possible. However, it would be very challenging to complete all that work by October 20th. This is due to several factors, including but not limited to time of application, preparation, acceptance, review times required by the agencies, and procurement of qualified contractors, individuals to complete said work. It's our intent to recycle as many materials as possible and procure contractors that share our goals. But it's simply too late in the year to believe that we can achieve said goals and satisfy the conditions of approval during the dry weather working season. We request that the Commission modify Condition Six to allow us six months after we've received all necessary approvals to complete the work, or at a minimum, five months during the dry weather working season. Second, the project description prepared by the staff notes that we, we will be removing something like 15,000 cubic yards of fill. That is not correct. We did not import that amount of material, and in fact, we anticipate removing something closer to 3,000 to 5,000 cubic yards. Our intent is consistent with the staff report to return the site to the grades prior to issuance of the original CDP for this project site. I don't think any change is needed in this regard, but it's something that I wanted to bring to everybody's attention. I'm sorry, and I want to apologize to all those that have been affected by this project. As many of you know, I was born and raised here locally, and returned after college to begin my professional career. For the time I was young, I made the decision to be a positive member of my community, this community, and contribute what I perceived as the best contribution possible, providing housing to others. Over the course of the last 20-plus years, my wife and I have achieved that goal, and our opinion proved Humboldt County. When my wife and I decided to build our dream home, it was a place to be where we would grow old together and watch our children watch their dreams of their own. Like the many other projects we have completed in this community, our intent was to provide a quality project that contributed positively to the surrounding landscape. I want only the best for this community and believe that conditions agreed upon herein allow this community to heal and move forward. While I'd hoped for a different outcome, I hope and I'm confident that determination this evening will bring peace to those that we've heard. With that, I'd like to thank the Commission for its time and attention to this matter, and I appreciate the attention for all those involved. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there others in the room who wish to comment on this matter? Are there any other participants on Zoom or phone that wish to comment on this matter? Seeing none, then, oh, yes, Commissioner, Director Ford.
Thank you. I, I would just like to revisit the question that Commissioner Scavdall asked and that the applicant,
Yeah.
Commissioner Schneider addressed relative to the timeframe. And we did put down an aggressive timeframe to indicate the seriousness of this. But as Mr., or Commissioner Scavdall identified, that add insult to injury to not be able to conform with the required timeframe. I'm a little hesitant to let it go into the, the wet season. I prefer not to see grading done above the slough and potentially have sedimentation going on there. So, it would make sense to me that the site be stabilized for the winter and then be given time within the dry season next year to remove the fill.
I think that's agreeable. You don't want to do more damage by working in the wet season.
Commissioner Mitchell.
The applicant had mentioned six months of working time in the dry season is, if, if one were to word a motion, would one want to include that specific timeframe? Or how would?
I heard him say six months from final approval or five months within a dry season. And six months from final approval, unless there's an appeal, would put him at best right in the middle of the winter. And, and so really, if he has trouble getting contractors lined up and getting things lined up, we don't want him starting in October and, and going into the wet season. Prayerfully, there is a wet season. So I think that a motion would be that modify Condition Number Six to indicate that prior to July 31st of 2024, and then everything else could be the same there. And then prior to initiation of any grading and prior to for the, the grading permit, I mean, that could be just before the end of the year. And then maybe modify Condition Number Six to indicate, or I, I think that, that would adequately address that. And then add a new condition requiring that the site be stabilized for the, the winter.
Okay, thank you. I do just want to note that I didn't close, I didn't have a chance to close the public comment, but I still don't see any other hands raised, so I will go ahead and close public comment. Bring it back to the Commission to figure out how to proceed.
Let's see, I just, if I may.
Please.
I think it would, I, I think Director, or Commissioner Ford, excuse me.
Director Ford.
Director Ford. Address the
You got a demotion.
Yeah, sorry. Address the, the need for additional time. I think it would be good if, if the applicant
I think it would be good if the applicant could make a good faith effort to start the building removal and recycling and repurposing of some of those materials the summer, but I think it's going to be difficult to get all the grading finished in that timeframe. So then stabilize the site and then come back in the spring and finish that up. And then I also wanted to acknowledge the applicant's heartfelt apology to the community. Appreciate that.
Yeah, I too want to acknowledge and thank Mr. Snyder for his words tonight and for doing everything in his power to fix this. Thank you.
I think I'm ready to make a motion. So let's see if I can do this. Adopt the resolution 23 attachment one, which does the following, finds that the project is categorically exempt from CEQA per section 15308 of CEQA guidelines, makes all the required findings for approval of the coastal development permit and the special permit modification and the lot line adjustment, and approve the Travis Snyder coastal development permit and special permit modification and lot line adjustment as recommended by staff and subject to the recommended conditions of approval in addition to a modification to condition number six. And then you can insert the language that you brought up tonight in terms of, you know, I don't think you should rush it, so even if July is not, this year, we had a winter that, a spring that even prevented construction until after May, so in some areas. So I wouldn't hold it even to July, Septembers.
So I would offer that there be a sentence added that the director of planning a building can extend the deadline due to natural circumstances.
Sure. Okay, thank you, Commissioner O'Neal, for that motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner O'Neal, seconded by Commissioner Scavdall. Any further discussion on the motion before we vote?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to note again for the record that I have toured the site and spoken with the applicant a number of times. And while I think it's way too late to nitpick anything in the staff report, I just do want to clarify that the amount of fill brought in in the staff report does seem to be overstated based on my review of the site. And while the word removed was used a number of times with vegetation, it was really trimmed or cut, but in the spirit of the owner's request, I'd like to move forward and put this chapter behind all of this.
Okay. Commissioners Scavdall?
I also want to make it clear, I've never met or discussed anything with the applicant, and although it appeared like I stepped right into that scheduling conversation, that was just coincidental.
I think that's based on your long professional experience with projects like this one. Okay. If there's no further discussion on the motion, then I would invite a voice votes. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Please say nay. Any abstention? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, and that brings us to our final item, and I'm hoping we can get through it. We have just under a half an hour until we're supposed to be out of here, so let's see what we can do. This is the Nancy Young special permit. And Mr. Lazar, I would invite a staff report.
Thank you, Chair. I think we're just about up with it. Looks like we got it. So I'm going to run fast so we can make as much time for comment.
Yeah, thank you.
So the first slide is showing the proposal. This is bed and breakfasts in the Elk River area. I want to explain the bed and breakfast provisions. You don't see these permits ordinarily because they're administratively approvable, and we don't have a lot of them under our belt. But the provisions have been in the code since 1989. They were revised in 1998. They allow them basically anywhere where a cottage industry is allowed, so it would be all residential zones and several other zones, including Agricultural General, which is where this project is located, allows for a maximum of four bedrooms to be used. The owner or an operator must reside on the premises. And like I was saying a minute ago, this is the first proposal we've had in a while and likely the first in the Elk River area. This is the code, just for your reference. It's not a very, like, the cannabis ordinance is pages long, this is five or six parts, and I summarize most of them. One of the other requirements is that the rooms cannot have kitchen facilities. We do have draft amendments planned for the zoning regulations, and those were unveiled recently and a public workshop was held. I don't want to get into the details because you'll see it eventually, but you should be aware that we are in the process of amending the code to allow for. We differentiate between bed and breakfast and short-term rentals in the concept of a vacation rental, because it's an entire house versus a portion of a house or rooms within a detached dwelling like we have tonight. But it should be noted that in the current draft of the ordinance, this proposal would be principally permitted. That's a draft, but it would be allowed because it would be two or less bedrooms and it would have an onsite operator. But it's not a vacation rental, it's not a short-term rental, it's a bed and breakfast, and it's treated separately under the code. There was a moratorium adopted. Want to be clear, that moratorium doesn't apply to this type of use because bed and breakfasts are treated separately under the code, and that's why you're allowed to proceed tonight without any issue there. This is showing the location of the project. It's kind of just outside the screen. Got clipped a little bit, but you can see it's down Elk River Road, a considerable distance, about four miles to, from the Herrick off-ramp to the project site. This shows more closely the neighborhood in which it's located. It's at the end of a private road, which is called Elk River Court, and you can see the parcel at the southern end. This is zoning and land use maps. It's agriculturally zoned property, planned and zone for rural residential agriculture. Like I was saying, it does allow for this type of use. This is a site plan created by the applicant. We've overlaid it with the satellite image to kind of simplify things. Here you can see there's a primary residence that's occupied by the applicant, who is also the owner, and there's a historical earlier residence that's, we would consider to be a legal non-conforming accessory dwelling unit because there's a, it's a second residence with its own kitchen. A portion of that residence, a bedroom is proposed to be used, as well as a bedroom within the primary residence, and collectively, those are the two bedrooms that would be used as part of the bed and breakfast operation. I visited the site today just to take a couple photos to share with you. This is showing the intersection of Elk River Road and Elk River Court. This is looking down Elk River Court from the intersection. There's a wooden bridge that I think can be seen in the next photo here that crosses Elk River Road, or sorry, Elk River itself. This is further down the road, showing the condition of the private road, the number of homes that use this road. This is the intersection with where the road kind of turns off to the subject parcel, and that's the green building that you see here in this photo. That's the primary residence. Here's a second unit that's being used as part of the bed and breakfast, or is proposed to be used. So I'm not sure what's going on here, but let's go back a little more. Okay, so we did have this originally teed up to be approved by the zoning administrator. After sending out notices, we received a number of comments on the project, and it became clear that it was appropriate to bring it to the Planning Commission. It has been a controversial project. There's been both support and opposition. These slides show kind of the, if you think about the white being the parcel, you can kind of see it in both slides, to the south of it, further down Elk River Road, all of our, all of our opposition has come from the letters that you received with your packet. The road itself, where the project's located, the people who occupy and live on that road have largely supported it with one exception. And here you can see the owners that are in opposition, just locations. There's a variety of issues that have been raised. They're summarized in the staff report and being repeated here. We believe that the findings can be made, that's why our recommendation will be for approval tonight. But some of the issues include inconsistency with housing element goals, some are, you know, in a more broad fashion. There is concern within the community about the loss of housing stock as a result of vacation rentals. In a bed and breakfast context, it's a little harder to see it that way because you're usually occupying a portion of a residence, not the entire residence. In the case of the ADU, though, that I was mentioning earlier, you could argue both ways conceivably, but it is really just a bedroom that's being occupied. There's other issues that have surrounded the bridge you saw earlier, the fire department potentially may not be able to go over that bridge, but if you think about it, whether it's a 30-day or greater rental or a less than 30-day rental, the same people, the same risk exists. It's kind of not necessarily worsening the potential risk as a result of it. So there's a variety of issues that have been raised by the, and we'll be happy to speak to them, but I don't want to take too much time beyond that right now. This is just showing some of the public support. The neighborhood signed a petition in support of the project, and this is just a map showing kind of signatures collected by the applicant. And so we, in terms of environmental review, we believe it's exempt from CEQA. We're talking about existing structures that are being occupied for a different use. There's exemptions that are provided categorically. Class one exemption allows for operation, repair, maintenance, permitting, leasing, licensing, and minor alterations of existing public and private structures involving negligible or no expansion of the existing or former use. We believe it fits that quite well. So we recommend approval because of the CEQA exemption, the fact that it meets the requirements that I shared with you earlier, that they have an operations plan and house rules that have been revised. It should be noted, it's in the staff report, but I didn't speak about it tonight. This was in operation unpermitted, then it was a subject of a code enforcement case. The applicant volunteered to cease operations, seek the permit, has been going through the process and is seeking to re-initiate the use. But during that past operation, some of the neighbors had a chance to identify issues that they had with the operations themselves. So the operations plan has been kind of customized and tailored to address those to the best that the applicant thinks. And we do have support from agencies. So Planning Commission can always add or amend conditions of approval, require further environmental review, or deny the permit request, but we recommend that you find in favor of the project and we have a suggested motion. So that's all I'll do for now, and I'm prepared to answer questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lazar. Commissioner West?
First of all, thank you for such a detailed staff report. I really appreciate the visuals, helping us understand the neighborhood and what's going on there. My primary question, and I'm sorry if I missed it, my brain is a little bit tired at this point. How are you ensuring that the area in the ADU that is not the bedroom is not going to be used as a part of this operation? If it's all one structure and only the bedroom is allowed, but there's this whole other area that's just so tempting to use, is there anything built in to mitigate that?
Thank you for the question. So if you think about the code provisions that say that rooms will not be, not include a kitchen facility, if you take it to its logical conclusion in the classic bed and breakfast context where you have an existing large residence with several rooms that could be occupied, there's always going to be a kitchen in a residence. So the idea is that the rooms are not like single-room occupancy situations where you have a built-in kitchen or a studio kind of situation, and we believe that that's not the case here. Just like if it was a room within the primary residence, the kitchen wouldn't be an issue for that room any more than it is in the accessory dwelling unit. Beyond that, the code's not very explicit about saying all kitchen facilities must be off-limits to guests. It's really just saying that, it's, I think it's trying to differentiate really between that type of scenario that it could attract, and, but, but I am, I am kind of speculating. But we believe that it's not necessary to include a condition restricting use of the kitchen because it's not a component of the room itself, it's really just a part of the overall facility.
I just want to add one thing, that this does happen with these sort of facilities where the county sometimes receives complaints, and it's usually very easy to go on Google and find the advertisements for the operation. And so just doing that here would potentially uncover how they are advertising it if they were to be advertising it in violation of the permit.
Commissioner Mitchell and then Commissioner Scavdall.
Can you clarify one more time why this couldn't be granted administratively? Does that have to do with the underlying zoning?
Actually, no administrative pathway exists at this time. So the special permit process is by nature a discretionary permit. It goes before the zoning administrator or can be approved administratively with a waiver of a hearing, but in this case, we would have received a request for a hearing, it just happened at the zoning administrator level. So there is no administrative pathway under the regulations, the zoning regulations at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Scavdall, and then Commissioner O'Neal.
Before I ask my question, I do want to disclose, I did a neighborhood drive-through on my way to the commission meeting tonight, so I actually drove across the bridge. But there's some information from some of the project opponents, I guess, that's in our packet, including a screenshot from an Airbnb site advertising Elk River Cottage, and it clearly shows a kitchen in the pictures of the cottage. So I'm trying to understand, when you say that a B&amp;B can't have a kitchen, has the kitchen been removed, or is there a kitchen in the cottage, or what's, what are we saying?
So we're saying that a bedroom that is a part of an accessory dwelling unit may be authorized for use as a bed and breakfast, and that bed and breakfast bedroom happens to be as part of a unit that has a kitchen, but it's not integrated within the room itself as the code.
So I want to be clear, there's a bedroom in the main house, the master bedroom, and there's a cottage. The cottage has a kitchen. Is the cottage part of this bed and breakfast permit or not?
It is, just like the main house has a kitchen as well. So that's the kind of paradox I was trying to point out earlier, that even in the classic setting, there will always be a kitchen most likely in a bed and breakfast, it's just not within the room that the tenant or the guest occupies. And that's what's prohibited under the code.
Yeah, and I'm having a hard time getting there, okay? This, this sounds like a short-term vacation rental that's trying to come into the Planning Commission under an old 25-year-old ordinance for bed and breakfast. So I'm, and I'm just not getting there from reading the staff report and seeing pictures. You can't have a cottage, clearly has a bedroom, but also has a bathroom, a kitchen, and a living room. So are we just saying you're going to rent the bedroom and you can't walk into the other parts of the cottage? It's, it's a house.
We're not restricting it under the conditions of approval. I want to be very clear that that is not what we're suggesting be done.
All right, I'm just having a hard time. It's a house, it's not a bedroom.
Commissioner O'Neal and then Commissioner West.
Do we have any idea during the year that it operated without approval, how many days of the year that it was rented out? Was that ever disclosed, or what percentage of the year?
I want to say over 50, I believe, but I think the applicant can certainly clarify. Yeah, yeah, at least that many times. I think the applicant could easily confirm that.
I was just curious about the impact, you know, the annual impact.
Okay, and Commissioner West, and then let's try to bring it to the public.
So I think along the thoughts that Commissioner Scavdall is having, so there's currently a moratorium on Airbnbs and short-term rentals of ADUs. Can you help us distinguish? I guess I'm getting stuck on the same thing where this seems to be sort of sliding past the moratorium, and is there anything that you can do to help us understand how this is separate?
Take a stab here. So short-term rental draft regulations are a separate part of the code. They specifically exclude themselves from the bed and breakfast provisions that we're talking about today. A bed and breakfast, there's four things that it has to have in order for it to be permissible. It has to be within the right zoning, it has to have an onsite operator or owner, and it can't have a kitchen facility in the room, is that's the distinction I'm making. I understand it's a stretch, but that's how we've read it. And, and you can't use more than four bedrooms of what you're managing as your bed and breakfast. So that's why we believe it fits within that context. It doesn't say that the bedrooms have to be within a single residence, it doesn't say that there shall be no bathrooms in addition to the bedrooms. It really just says there's a certain number of bedrooms that you can utilize under that pathway, and it's a four-bedroom scenario, and you can't have pathway, and it's a four-bedroom scenario, and that you can't have kitchen facilities in the bedrooms that are used. So, it is, it is a struggle in that we don't have a short-term rental ordinance, this is a pathway that exists and has for some time, and we believe that this project fits, albeit it's a little bit of a gyration because of the way we've talked about the kitchen facilities that exist within the ADU. And I would just offer that, in the vacation rental context, it really does distinguish in the sense that it is a whole house for rental that's, may or may not be an ADU or a primary dwelling. It doesn't have an onsite caretaker necessarily.
Okay, with that, I think I want to bring it, open up public comment. We have some folks that have been very, very patient. So, I, as with every project, I would invite the applicant to speak first, if you wish. You can have longer than three minutes, you can have up to 10 if you need, but I would also advise you that we are running late tonight, so, and you can also have a further chance to respond at the end of other comments.
Are you clear?
Thank you all for staying so late. So first of all, there was a question about the number of nights rented. In the summer months, it was maybe 80%, and then as winter approached, it was much, much less. I would say, I had had a short-term rental in West Marin, and I paid 10% occupancy tax, which was the only thing required, and so I didn't think about getting a permit. And I paid the occupancy tax, the county received between $2,000 and $3,000 during the time that I was doing the short-term rentals, and I didn't hear anything back challenging or saying I should do anything else. So, I want to speak briefly about the two things that I have the greatest concern about regarding it. Well, three things. One is traffic impact, and in particular, there are two homes that have been impacted, not just by two renters of the 444 people that rented my places. Two renters who did drive too fast, but when a car drives fast on that gravel road in the dry part of the year, it creates dust. And the owner of the very first home, whose partner is here, his bedroom window is very close to the road. So, I mean, that's, that's a big problem. If you have people coming in and driving too fast, that's a problem. And there also is a young woman, whose father and the whole family may still be here, that is very sensitive to dust. So, I really care about anything that I'm doing in my community, being caring and thoughtful of my neighbors. And when I learned that this had happened, I went to every neighbor and talked to them, and, because I hadn't, nobody called me and told me. And so, what I started doing, my daughter-in-law from Thailand started writing a letter that, two days before, or an email, explaining why it was really important for people to drive below 10 miles an hour. And it feels like you're crawling, so I can understand that it's kind of hard for some people sometimes. Then I got a second complaint from a neighbor, and so I started personally calling the day before our renters arrived, and essentially have had no, no problem since, with the exception of one time when the other neighbor that came tonight called me, the first day that a new renter had come, it happened to be a long-term renter, he drove 20 miles an hour. And so, I went to him immediately and explained again, and he apologized like crazy. He was going to his first day on, his first job at Cal Fire, and he's been crawling ever since. So, at any rate, I just want to make it clear that I really do care about my neighbors and what's good for them. And I am now proposing that I pay double, if we go through with this. I pay double the maintenance for the road. I also have put, I created house and cottage rules that are three pages, and a registration form that, where they have to sign saying that they've read the house rules, and have addressed the issue of driving and all the other, you know, typical issues you care about, noise and everything else isn't really a problem where the house is located, and the quality of people who are coming. One of the complaints had to do with it was going to increase crime. My heavens, the papers I just handed to the clerk, I wish she would, would pass to you. Yeah, thank you. Because when you, when you read those just reviews out of my guestbooks that are in every, both the cottage and the bedroom, the quality of people coming up to Humboldt and choosing a place like mine, it's like they come there for the nature, and the beauty, and the peace and quiet, and to get to it in the daytime, enjoy going out into the community, and they give great revenue to the community as well. I better stop.
Just, just because of the time, I would ask you to wrap it up if you could. Thank you.
Okay, at any rate, and the one other comment I want to make is Christie's here, Christie Wrigley, and she has the forest next to the house. And initially, when we were first there, I wasn't going to do a bed and breakfast or Airbnb. And then we figured out how much it costs to live in this house with utilities that are humongous, and flood insurance and so forth. And my son and daughter-in-law, who came from rural Thailand, assumed, because Christie had said we could walk in the forest, that people, our guests could too. And I didn't convey the message from my other son, Sean, quickly enough to them, that Christie didn't want people walking. So I felt very bad when she called and, and found out it's a problem. I now have two signs up posting, you know, please, private property, no trespassing, and I'll stop.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. I need to check in with the director.
Okay.
Can we, can we extend this meeting till 10?
Let me go check with the guard and see what he's willing to do.
Okay, yeah.
That's, that's our real limitation.
I know, that's, that's the limitation, and I'm sorry that we are up at this point now. But, okay, do we need to take a short recess while you... Yes, okay, take a very short recess, sorry. Okay, folks, we're coming out of recess, but unfortunately, and I really apologize, we are not able to continue this meeting. We have, we have a 9:30 cutoff. We are going to have to continue this to the next meeting. I'm really sorry. I regret that I didn't do something sooner, or warn you sooner that this might happen. I see your hand is raised, sir, but we, I have to, I have to end this item, and if you have written comments, you certainly may bring them up, and they will be distributed right now. Again, I really apologize, I've seen you here for three and a half hours, but we are going to have to continue this. It will be the first item after the consent agenda on the next meeting.
When's the next meeting?
Which is two weeks from today, July 20th. Same time, starting at 6:00, and again, we would expect this to be heard much, much earlier in the meeting. Not right at 6:00, but it could be soon after. Thank you, and I apologize, and with that, I guess we'll skip the report from Planner, given the time.
We need to get a motion and a second and a vote.
Of course, yes, before we all rush out of here, yes.
I move that we close this meeting.
On this item, we need to...
Please, close public comment for today.
Okay, I'm closing public comment for today.
Yep.
On this item, and then I would entertain a motion to continue the Nancy Young special permit to the July 20th meeting. So moved?
Second.
Brian Mitch, Brian and Ivor are seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. I think with your permission, given the time, we should probably skip over the report from Planner and Planning Commission discussion items, just so we can vacate promptly. Thank you guys so much, and meeting's adjourned.